Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Committee of Home Meeting on Tuesday, February 13th. Conference Ball and Street, Dallas, Squamish, away on mail. Welcome to the traditional chair of the council meeting. There is an agenda in front of the committee. Motion to adopt it. It's a move by Susan. All is in favor. The motion varies. First up, we have a financial plan review and public engagement debrief. Pass it over to Anushka.
Good morning, Council. Anushka, Reverend Financial Analyst. So for the public, there is a different way that they can interact with us. You can just attend the meeting, send us an email. There's Twitter, Facebook, and they have all the budget information on our website. Just a quick update of where we are with the budget schedules. So we're at the public meeting on January 30th. And now we're going to review the few changes that have been made since and some outstanding items. So we can move forward with the financial plan bylaw and then in April go with the property tax review and the tax bylaw. On the agenda today, we will review the public feedback since the public meeting and also like all the updates that have been made to the plan, the financial plan since January 30th. So most likely on the general fund, the capital plan, and all the emerging issues since. Our calls today is just to review the public feedback, if council has any amendments that they'd like to make, and permission to proceed with the financial plan bylaw three readings and also to decide on a date. I will pass this on to Christina for the public feedback update.
Good morning, Council. Christina Moore, Communications Manager. We have, we've had a few final comments trickling in from our Brennan Park budget display. I will read them out now. One gentleman is, I shouldn't suggest, I shouldn't assume it's a gentleman, although I, there's possibly a name here. One person is asking, why are we upgrading the Wi-Fi at Brennan Park? That's because we already have the Shaw Open Account there and the person's wondering why. I'll read them through. There's a few different topics and then we can go back. Lobby or change rooms in the pool building need a water fountain. This person would like some expanded library space. And yes, two more affordable housing. A comment about the RCM, the costs of the RCMP camera. This cost is twice this person's income and so that's questioned. Expand the hot tub area, improve showers. The comment is that they're sometimes lukewarm and don't always work. Asking for a covered bike area to lock up bikes, a bigger gym, and a weight room at Brennan Park. So Brennan Park has definitely been our most prolific area where we've seen the most number of comments, which has been great. They've, many of them have been focused on, on the rec center and our recreation offerings. We do know that council, as part of this budget, there is a budget line item for public engagement around the recreation center. So I think a lot of the comments that council has been hearing with regards to some of the facilities there can be addressed through that public engagement process, which will give another opportunity for them to be looked at a little bit more closely. So just in terms of these questions, back to the Wi-Fi, I don't know if we want to address that.
Yeah, we do, let's go through them all and actually if we have answers for them, if it's, if it's feedback and we can put it in the offer.
Then we can pass that on. Absolutely.
Well, the RCMP security camera is the update because I think this current system at the moment isn't working properly and it's $45,000.
Yeah, it's, it's an external camera and it's a safety requirement from the RCMP personnel members in the public and it is being paid out of the services provision so it's not affecting the general.
Yeah, and it was federally mandated, it wasn't even the RCMP mandated, it was federal.
It's a requirement that municipal has to.
And I, and we obviously sourced different cameras and this was the one that met our needs in the place or how was that, how was that done?
I believe, and I can double check, that procurement of items for the detachment is done through the federal procurement process, the provincial procurement process, but I can follow up.
That's an interesting thing. It's our building, we own the building, we would, presumably we're paying for this camera so we own the camera. Is that typical that we would, I can see cars and guns and stuff being procured through, but something going on our building, just curious.
Yeah, let me follow up on that. I'll get the facts.
I have two hands, but on this particular RCMP one?
No.
Council, or Mayor, through you. This is a carry forward and I believe that what happened was when they went out last year, they realized they didn't have enough funds for the cameras, so I believe it probably was an accident.
Got caught up.
Reviewed in terms of best price.
If you wanted to go through the Wi-Fi, I'm not sure if Robin wants to keep that and keep on side yet.
Thank you, Mayor Heisman. Robin, I'm through, General Manager Corporate Services. The Wi-Fi upgrade at Brennan Park came as a result of a number of complaints last year around this time from the public. You need a Shaw account in order to access the Shaw Wi-Fi service so that if you don't have any, don't get Wi-Fi at the rec center. And the Shaw Wi-Fi kicks you out and you need to re-log in after 20 to 30 minutes. So it's kind of painful for patrons at the rec center as well. The Wi-Fi in the arena area and the stands, even with the Shaw account, doesn't work. So this upgrade is to allow everybody to have Wi-Fi all the time, just like at the library or here at Municipal Hall, it's the same service and the adventure center.
Did you have it anymore?
No, well, we covered it pretty well. Yeah, the, the system tends to sag, especially before we had a big tournament, this became like the items playing there. We have a lot of coaches and a lot of family on, trying to get Wi-Fi on their systems with their handheld devices, it just can't handle it.
Excellent. What was next on the list?
The lobby or change rooms in pool building need water fountain.
Well, do we, well, there's a few water fountains in there, but I always think you can always do with more. Is this part of the general, has staff there been thinking about where or facilities, about where we would continue to have water fountains?
No, but that is definitely something we could look at, absolutely.
Is that something that we have enough in the budget, we can, how expensive are they, and is it something we can, if we need to, during the year, we can just add one or two without amending our budget?
We'll have to look and bring back that process because I don't think anybody's got that.
It all depends on the different, and location.
That's right. And I understood there was a, there is a water fountain in the aquatic lobby and in the other lobby, as well as in the pool itself. So we'll look at, we'll look at what needs to be upgraded.
I know, I thought, I knew there was a couple, but it'd be interesting to drill down. Well, what's on water fountains in there?
Yeah, it might be useful, actually. I mean, there's taps, our tap water's totally fine and there's taps in the change rooms because we usually fill our water bottles in the hockey change rooms, but there's no water fountain outside if people need to fill, like in the lobby or of the, for skating and everything, you have to go out. And if you're skating, it is, you can't access. I guess there's the bathrooms there, but they're not, if you're in your skates, you can't really get to the bathrooms. So it might be useful thing by where the concession stand used to be, where we have water plum, to add a water fountain in there.
On the water?
Yeah, because I know in the pool, there is one, but as soon as you exit the changing room, there's, there's a water fountain right there. So I'm not sure about that need, but possibly the lobby because there are people who don't use the lobby. And I can't, just can't remember the pool area lobby. That might be the only spot that I can think of where there might not be one or where it could be.
Yeah, the one that occurs to me is much as a small boat in the, in the actual dressing room area. Anyway, we'll leave that with staff to maybe consider. What's next, Christina?
A covered bike area to lock up bikes and then expand the hot tub area and improve the showers, so.
With regards to the, I think that's a great suggestion, covered lockup area. I'm just thinking about how we might look at getting that type of thing, but I don't, I don't want to lose track of it because I think it's worthwhile. I, you know, it actually drives me a little crazy when all these fountains go in and they don't put covers over the bike lockup areas.
If it's really specifically to Brennan Park, is possibility staff could take that out of the active transportation budget and lock it in there?
Okay, those are the types of things we can consider with that.
Actually, I haven't had a contact.
Just cover, just putting wood cover over the ones that we already, the racks that we have out there, doesn't seem like too onerous of a job. There's already the racks outside. Maybe they can be relocated to an area where we can actually cover them properly.
Yeah, if, if we need to relocate, shift around where they are to facilitate some sort of.
And they're quite packed as well, not a lot of days because we have the active transportation going right there. It might be worthwhile adding an extra rack if we're going to cover, go through the expense of covering. Rack can encourage better active transportation.
Yeah, so on the, getting all the comments about the civics or the rec center, I mean, we have the boards up at the rec center and you have parents leaving with kids and I'm sure that has something to do with.
It's busy place, yeah.
You know, everybody talking about the rec center. And I know we have the boards up in other locations too, the farmer's market.
Through you, Mayor. We haven't had the boards at the farmer's market. We've had them on display at the 55 Activity Center. We've had them on display at the, at the library. The library has the binder. Unfortunately, they don't have the space for us to put up the boards, but we've had the binder and the comment box. And then we've had it here at Municipal Hall as well and we've, we've been sharing it through our online channels.
Yeah, so I mean, it's, even where the boards are is where you get the comments.
Just clarification with the RCMP camera wasn't correct. You have the RRC process and then RFP and the RCMP helped to get the responses to make sure. Thank you.
Excellent. Ted?
Yeah, thank you. Just on those two comments, the hot tub and the showers, which I assume relate to the pool area. You know, from being a user of that pool, it would be a significant thing to try to expand the hot tub area, you'd have to push out a wall. And, and I think that's something, if we were going to consider it, I wouldn't want to just do it as a quick one-off. That's something that would come as part of a Brennan Park plan because there's other things you'd start to think about doing with that. As far as the showers go, I can't complain about the showers at the pool, frankly, and I'm not the only user, of course, but it's not the kind of thing that I'm aware of as being a problem to the point where we would want to take an immediate step as opposed to maybe consider it as part of the general plan with Brennan Park.
Yeah, those are two pretty big ticket items that I think need to be financially planned for, let alone prioritized through a variety of mechanisms in the master planning process. So we'll, we'll get to that this year. What else are we doing? We get, we get the gym and the fitness facility comments every year and that again will be part of this master planning process. I see, I got a couple hands. Ted, through you.
I will make a comment on the gym because I did meet with Ryan Blackwell, who I think we all know, and he brought along the topic of when you are, if you are putting in a gym or a weight room, you have a disabled area for it, which requires some special equipment, obviously. So just to consider that as part of that discussion because I think.
Unaccessible.
Absolutely, yeah. Well, and it's not just accessible, but it's specific.
Designed for wheelchair.
Exercise points, exactly.
Just because I know we're going out to engagement on Brennan Park, can, can we just collect all the feedback around Brennan Park that came in through the budget process and hand that over to those doing the Brennan Park? Because it's frustrating as a citizen to feel like you've already given feedback and then you're told you've got to give the same feedback as part of another process. So it's just reassurance to the folks that have already provided feedback through the budget process that their comments are being recorded.
Yep. Ted, what are we?
You know, if you could set up the boards at the two post office areas for Friday and have someone there, you could get a lot of comments and a lot of other stuff.
My biggest concern with having all these Brennan Park, I keep leaning forward, which microphones are we using on the top table once again? Yeah, I heard from somebody the other day about earthquake proofing for Brennan Park and that the building is completely deficient as far as earthquake proofing and safety. So again, we look at all these deficiencies every year, but, and I know that public engagement is going out about deficiencies and my concern is that we're just going to keep on getting comments about deficiencies without looking at the full scope of rebuilding a new, a new facility with all the density. We are completely deficient in amenities with our population growth. The pool's crowded, all the facilities are crowded. So I really do want to make sure in our engagement, and I know I've asked this many, many times about complete, a complete rebuild and making sure that that is in our scope of engagement.
Thank you.
And the, the safety issues.
I would like to, and I, I think then just, maybe we can get an answer back on, I've never heard of earthquake issues at Brennan Park, they weren't brought to our attention if they are correct. But if we could get some understanding of, I know we've talked about firewall, et cetera, et cetera. Be good to understand the seismic stability of all of our facilities, particularly as we bring back in. Did we have anything else on the list?
No, and my, we, we are getting very small trickles in now. They're continuing to come again primarily from the recreation center. Our thoughts around the budget boards is they've been up for several weeks now and so we're, we were thinking that it was probably time to bring them down. They're looking a little ratty so they either need refreshing or bringing down. Certainly comments are still invited and Anushka mentioned at the beginning, all of the different ways, the budget feedback at squamish.ca. Our budget page at squamish.ca is still, is still very active and they've got online, the online tool is available for residents. So if council is okay with that, we would consider taking the displays down by the end of this week and, and just continue to collect any last feedback online.
I'm wondering if it's through Paul, just building on what Council was saying, instead of just taking it down, maybe putting up, thank you very much, what we heard and make a bit of a list and then push the master planning that's coming up in the next month.
That's a great idea. Yeah, we'll do that.
Thanks. Anything else, Christina?
Not for me, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Christina. Is there any changes that council would like to know after hearing about all this feedback? Just to confirm, I know we said like we would like to come back with the covered bike parking, some options, and water fountains.
Yeah, and I think, I think everyone's supportive of the Wi-Fi has, has been quite a while and that's really important. The other, some of the other ones are really big. RCMP one, of course, we have to do. Some of the other improvements Brennan Park are large scale capital projects that we need to put into the whole list and consider amongst all the other priorities of the district. But some of these smaller ones, if we can somehow incorporate, I think they're good suggestions, incorporate them into, into the budget somehow, for existing budget somehow, that'd be great.
Yeah, I was gonna say the water fountains don't seem too onerous in areas that there's already plumbing, like the area in the, in the skate, the skating front area. I was also going to say that maybe on the feedback board, the changes that have been made in the budget since the budget board went up, because the budget boards have been up for a while and we've had some changes in the budget. So maybe include the changes in our budget to the board to recognize comments that have been made or, or changes that council has made. And so when we say thank you, say this is, these are the changes that have been made from feedback.
Through you, Mayor. We did refresh the boards just prior to the public information meeting so that two weeks leading up to that included all of council's changes to that point.
Excellent. We've had many changes since then.
And we'll, later on, we'll review any of the changes that we've made since public meetings.
Thank you.
Just while we're on the subject of Brennan Park, I just wanted to dispel a myth that a lot of people were talking to me about us doing new change rooms there over the weekend when the boys were playing hockey, people were coming up, oh, we're getting new change rooms. I was like, no, we're not.
It's a self fulfilling prophecy.
Yeah, I know, and I'm like, I'm not quite sure where you heard that from, but no.
Maybe it's on the walls.
Anyway, I just wanted to let people know that it's part of the master plan and we're talking about what else, whatever else we can do out there, but that's on, on the agenda right now.
Ted, with regard to the bottle, the water, for water bottles and water fountain, a lot of people have in their arena, for whatever reason, using just a tap in a sink, the catch of the bucket, it's the same water. And sometimes those old sinks that are in the dressing rooms, it's actually hard to get a tall water bottle underneath it. So even if it's just putting in a spout in the dressing rooms, would be really, really helpful for filling up water bottles. And I can't imagine plumbing's all there, I can't imagine that's, that's very expensive at all. These, those little improvements, I think, really can help the experience of that facility. So if and when we can do those, that would be great.
So Mayor Heisman, to possibly reminder to the community that the Aquatic Center currently is under the Regimo government budgeting process. And just a reminder that we did submit a capital plan that as far as we know has been carried forward so far for Aquatic Center lockers and cubicle, $75,000 would be some of the investments on the change room that your public's alluding to. And obviously we continue to do tiling and grouting works.
I didn't, sorry, I didn't hear that last sentence.
And I said we're continuing to do tiling and grouting works on the pool.
On that, I, I understand why we went through funding, you know, borrowing through the SLRD, but from a governance point of view, at some point, doesn't it make sense to bring it all in-house or not?
I think it probably does. What we'll have to review is the fact that currently right now, we share the funding of that site with Airea D, so if we bring it back, that option will wait for us.
Well, we've negotiated funding.
Possibly through, possibly through the SLRD where they could keep an establishing service up there for that. But that's currently, we, we have had some initial dialogues with SLRD, but obviously with everything else going on this year, we'd like it not to be this year, but we certainly can revisit that.
Can you just refresh my memory, what's SLRD to share?
Well, it's an SYB facility and so, but it's done as a service area, so we basically pay 98% of the bill.
Most, we do pay most of it. I believe it's about a $150,000 contribution from the, from the head of region.
It's relative, it'd be interesting to understand if it's actually relevant to the populations. Both populations are growing, but.
They do it off the assessment.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly, it's a part of all of it.
Okay, next. Okay, so we'll just review the, Christine said, like all the changes from the public meeting. So that's the slide that you've seen over the past three months. So last thing, we reviewed this slide. We were at $27,593,000 and we've increased $48,000 cents and we're now at $27,642,000. So it's a 6.2% increase over 2017 taxation review, revenue, sorry. We'll review like all the changes on the next slide. So there's been like a few new projects since last time. The impact on taxation revenue is minimal. We've added the amortization and the new equipment reserve. We've increased it for 2018, it's only like 22, $23,000. And there's the library provision that's been added and the Equestrian Center Community enhancement grant. And like, you can, please review the list and let me know if you have any questions on the items.
So the 2017 capital projects carried forward is 3.1 million?
Yep.
How much of that did we tax for last year?
I think there is one. Well, if it's accumulated surplus, that would be.
So which project?
The carry forward.
Oh, just the full carry forward. Yeah. And the reason I ask is that, we're putting a lot into our capital projects, but if we're carrying forward 3.1 million, trying to get a sense of what did we not even start that's being carried forward, to make sure that we're taxing for projects in the right tax year, we can't do them. So this speaks to our capacity as an organization. Are we putting too much on the list still?
Yeah, for, this one is capital, so on page two of the package I've provided you today, so what the taxpayer will tax for, and there's some carry forward like from previous year is 1.1 million and the other carry forward for about $1.5 million is like the Tentile Fire Hall that is on old right now. I think it's due to the real estate review that they're waiting to see if they're doing the repairs or they're building a new facility. So the answer is like 1.1 million. Is that the answer you're looking for?
Where do I see 1.1 million on page two?
On the third column, that's all accumulated surplus and provision.
So there's probably more projects than that carried forward. As you can see by the list, there's $3 million worth of carried forward projects, but the accumulated surplus ones represent the taxation component of those projects in the prior year. So yes, there is a fair amount of capital carried forward, but when you consider the magnitude of our capital plan, it's probably only 10%.
Half of that, the basque and true job.
Yeah, you have to speak up.
Sorry, sorry, and half of that 1.1 million is the basque and project in the wastewater treatment plant, which is underway. We're just waiting to deliver and installation on those.
Not in the accumulated surplus, oh.
No, but the, in the total capital project, carry forward list that makes up the total 3 million. Yep. 2.1 million.
But if we look at anything in that accumulated surplus and provision, is there anything we didn't start or anything that's not substantially underway?
Here? I'm gonna try to spoil what I think.
Yeah, that's on old.
Maybe, maybe the simple question is, we have confidence we're going to be able to get all of our capital projects done that we're budgeting for this year?
Yes, from, from the infrastructure engineering point, I've had that blunt conversation with Mr. Rolston. He thinks that that, that project envelope is due.
And from, any other things?
I rely on, on the, the staff and similarly, I've had a very blunt conversation, especially in light of the vacancy with our capital projects manager. But we're closing in on filling that position, so the timing is good to kick off spring and summer capital projects. But it's definitely something that we will and continue to keep an eye on moving forward.
Would it be possible to chart the last 10 years or so, or eight years, or whatever you think is a useful number in terms of how much we, that's going, how much we're actually doing in a given year to see if it's.
Yeah, I have been charting that, actually, so that would be fairly straightforward for us to bring back on the, as we bring in the financial plan, or we can. Or we can, I can see if I can find it now, it might take me a little while to dig it up.
Slightly off topic, but to Gary's point about the wastewater treatments, that repair that's going on there, how's that going? Is it okay? Everything sort of still on target at that?
Materials have been ordered, and we're waiting today on an estimate for the install, for the install cost. So it is slow but steady.
It's pretty dogged, and all that rainfall we had in there, considering it wasn't on the main system.
Yeah, I just, just to try to understand that, because by, you know, in the general capital projects, my understanding is we've made decisions some years because it gives the staff certainty that it's in the budget, so that they can then go out and start putting projects out to tender, for example. Because they know the money is there when it happens. I mean, obviously, we don't spend the money until it happens, and that sometimes carries over to the next year. But, you know, I guess the alternative is, to try to second guess Council Elliot's point. I take the point about, you know, we don't want to tax unnecessarily, but whether we should tax this year or put it off in the following year when we have more capacity, but, and there might be some like that. But my understanding has always been with this, that one of the advantages of putting it in budget is that we get certainty, staff get certainty. And it can go out and start, they can start doing the sort of the groundwork for these projects that they wouldn't necessarily do if we had not made the budget decision. So I guess that's the other side of it, and is there a benefit to doing that, even though we might not spend it till next year? So it's a bit of a, bit of a bigger discussion perhaps.
And I think it'll become more and more a relevant discussion as we put more and more capital into the operational side of it and the revenue side of the budget. In the past, we took very little, so we just wouldn't borrow if we didn't get to it. We've kind of gotten the habit of throwing everything in the basket, just in case we could get to it, we'd have the ability to borrow if we needed to. And half the time, we wouldn't even borrow. Let me finish, Christine.
Sure.
But as we try to ramp up how much we're actually paying for smaller capital projects in the operational side of the budget, if you want to call it that, I think that's when we really need to be cognizant of making sure we're not biting off what we can chew. You want to respond?
Well, I think you nailed it on the head. With the capital, we do, as long as the capital is reflecting to start and carry on, especially for multiple years, we don't necessarily force it into year one to make that happen. We actually reflect the multiple years, and that allows staff to go ahead and tender, because as long as it's in that fiber financial plan, they can proceed. That's one of the reasons we often ask council to please vet year two, so that we can proceed through. So as much as possible, I think our engineering group has become quite disciplined about trying to think about that and give us as best as they can within reason. Where we sometimes run into some things is where we're waiting for grants. So we might put projects in, and on the caveat that we'll get a grant. And then if we don't get a grant, we might carry those projects over and rethink those, so sometimes we slip into that. It is still a fairly large capital plan now. We get bigger and bigger every year. A couple of years ago, I would have agreed that they were over budgeting capital considerably. Over the last few years, with the engineering and the focus that we have on capital projects, they have been at least always starting and in progress on pretty well everything that they've started. And where we haven't, there's been some fairly good explanations for that. I think you've hit it on the head, Mayor Heinzman, that sometimes it's in the operational side right now where we're carrying forward a substantial amount. One of the reasons you don't have the operational carry forwards in here is it does take us a little while to sort through those and carry them over. I think we're looking somewhere right now on the request for carry forward of about eight-hundred thousand, of which some of them you already had in there, they already knew they'd be carrying it forward. But as growth hits us and capacity hits us, we do sometimes struggle.
And there's always going to be circumstances for carry forward.
Yeah, and the reason I ask is that I know we're trying to set targets in terms of how much we put towards capital each year, and how much we, you know, there's a bucket for special projects. But we, we need to tie that to capacity and always be mindful that if we're actually not accomplishing on that special project budget or the capital projects, we need to take a second look at that. So as long as you're tracking that, then I'm comfortable.
I'm trying to bring it up, but it's very slow on this system, so bear with me. But we have been tracking, it has gotten better. I think, I think reasonably, we kind of looked at it just the other day and went, wow, that's a big capital plan. The other thing you have to recognize, though, is that we also have pressures from the S O D C, or the oceanfront lands. And so where we're having to front end those agreements, we have to make sure that we're ready to come to the table with the municipal share portions. So sometimes we're not in control of some of those projects that we're carrying forward or not showing with the timing of those. So, so please, it will look more substantial a capital plan than normal, and that is one of the key pressures there, is making sure we can service front end agreements.
That's just the current pressure right now is the oceanfront, but that's the case with every D C C project. We have to make sure we're planning for our municipal share, no matter what D C C project is.
If we're front ending and providing, providing municipal share and a front ender is actually not always the case. That's an agreement we went into specifically for the oceanfront lands. So less concerned where we're front ending off a D C C credit relationship, where we're not having to, you know, show that coming into the reserves to be drawn back out and then having to fund our portion. So it really varies on the type of project, whether or not we have to reflect in our capital plan or not.
Yeah, I feel the same way, Council, where I feel like if the money's not in the budget, we can't really plan for it. My concern with capital is capacity as we densify. I am concerned about wastewater treatment plants. You know, we tend to keep up instead of actually planning down the road for the extensive density that we're putting into the oceanfront and waterfront landing. And, you know, I'm worried that that treatment plant is not going to survive our density. So I'm wondering what we're doing to actually plan forward besides keeping up for the wastewater treatment plant, I'm sure.
Well, there's money in this year's budget to do the technology review and choice for that. I mean, the plant isn't at capacity. We're well ahead of where we need to replace the plant.
For now.
You know, for now and into the future. It's well planned. It's not retroactive. We're not chasing. We're ahead of the curve. We know where we're at. We know where we've got to be. The money's in the budget this year to do the technology review. And I believe in the five-year financial plan to actually do the work in nineteen and twenty. So from that point of view, I think we're well planning on wastewater treatment.
And I think the sewer fund is actually.
Robust, yes.
Robust, and it's where it's well planned.
Well, I was going to say.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, go ahead.
I think that's one of the major concerns for our public, and it's great to hear that from you, Gary, because I think the concern with the public is that our infrastructure, you know, they hear about infrastructure failings, and they hear about us putting money into infrastructure failings, and then the densification. So those two, just the public communication around that, I think it needs to be robust. And, you know, I hear from you that we're ahead of the curve, I appreciate that. But I think the public really needs to be well communicated to that we are capable of handling waste and sewer from densification and everything.
Yeah, on the sewer master plan, we're in an enviable position as far as other communities go. Now, we're, I brag about that. I mean, it really is a good, we've done a really good job on that. I've got to say that.
Just to Gary's point, it is in the lineup in the budget, the wastewater condition assessment, forty thousand dollars from accumulated surplus.
I don't have any more hands, so.
And Mayor Heinzman, just to the point I made earlier around the capital plan, unfortunately, I don't have the figures in for 2016. But we saw a rapid decline. We used to see quite a bit of difference between what we planned and what we did in capital back in 2009. In fact, that year was close to a eleven-nine dollar deficit in terms of not completing the works. We've got that down by 2014 to about three million, by 2015 to one-point-three million. So you really have seen a tremendous change in how capital is being planned and managed.
Well, my observation is that it's, it's really being driven by the master planning and then really thought out over and prioritized amongst each other over a five-year capital plan. Whereas before, the five-year capital plan wasn't even, it was something we had to do for government, but we never put any thought into it. So there's a huge, a vast improvement over the last couple of years.
One of the other things we try to do is we provide a bit of a funding envelope out to our capital managers. We put it with about five capital managers instead of everyone, and we give them the envelopes, sort of our funding ceilings and how much room they really have. And between that and then extensive work planning review from the G M's downward and the directors themselves, I think we've really got it to a place where they're being much more realistic with what they can and can't do. I think we're always a very ambitious staff, so it's not something we. So I think we're always not quite there, but that's got its merits too.
Well, and there's always more to do than what we, literally have the money or the capacity, so that's an inevitability, unfortunately. On the capital, any more questions?
For upper the capital plan, funding sources and by division as well over the next five years.
And maybe just explain the drivers for 2017, 2018, and why it actually goes down over the next six years.
So we'll certainly talk to the why it goes down. This is one of the reasons that we very rarely come out to council with our twenty-year financial plan either. Sometimes it's difficult without a robust database in the background for asset management. That we struggle sometimes to populate the future years of the plan as well as we could. So definitely, I believe that twenty, twenty onwards starts to be a little lower than we estimate it should be. Obviously, the key driver is S O D, is the oceanfront lands again. We still have, I think, a fairly substantial roads project in there that we are required to borrow for, for the M S A share. So that's pushing, that's spiking that a little bit. I think of what else, there was another fairly large borrowing project. Yes, actually, you're right. The landfill is a key one as well.
T T P.
Yeah, the T T P is another million.
With regard to the federal and provincial grants, would you say that we get a healthy contribution there, or are there more opportunities or not?
I would say that we're, we're quite successful, in my experience with municipalities. I think our engineering team always has shovel-ready projects, our economic development teams, Sean, they're very robust at it. Recreation's constantly looking for operational type grants. So I would say we do a fairly solid job at that. Just what you're seeing often is just what we received, not what's all we're going to plan.
That was a bit of setup question.
Yeah, I think.
The one piece, and we may get to it as we move on with the master planning process with Brandon Park, is, is all these master plans, all these asset management plans really help us be able to get grants because we've done our homework. And that's where I think Brandon Park is, and Council Chico alluded to it earlier, Brandon Park is sort of falling behind the needs and the capacity because we haven't pushed that up to a point where it's really concrete, community-driven, and mapped out for the coming years. So just wanted to put it that.
Well, I love when you, you know, set up those opportunities for us, right? And this is one, I generally or definitely agree. The master plans help us figure out the long-range twenty-year plans too. And with those, we can start to really see if we're going to come up short, or if we're going to have peak times or periods. So we really rely on the master plans. Areas where we haven't had them in the past robustly, those are the ones that you'll see now where we're struggling to fund.
An important question, would you say that the curling wind, are you?
Oh, steady, steady.
So you're also finding your package from page five to eleven, like, the detailed capital plan for, I think, includes all the carry forward and the projects for 2018.
And for the next five years.
Are you going to go through it first, or before I?
I was not planning to go through it.
Okay, well, we'll just go to questions.
Because like you have, like, it's the same that we've reviewed before, and with the addition of all these projects, the carry forward projects.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
My concern is, again, with economic development, if we are going to go forward with the projects the council has put forward, I am worried about capacity. And I look at the budget and I see all the planning personnel, planning personnel, and moving triblets all the way through. But I can't quite make sense of all the little bits of staffing for economic development. And I want to make sure that it's appropriated.
Those are special projects.
Yeah, special projects. Each one is a different special project.
So we're on a capital plan, so we're supposed to button down one pocket at a time.
Till eleven.
Page five.
Page five to eleven. Yep, you said five to eleven, so I'm going through and looking at.
Could you give us a number? Page?
Uh, like, twenty-seven.
On what page?
On page eleven. Oh, page three. Sorry, three. In the general thing.
So let's stick to capital, just so we don't get confused. We'll get to that. Anything on the capital?
Yes, three of them.
Anything on the capital?
Oh, we'll move to that.
Yes.
We're going to get there, we're just.
That would get there.
It's a little easier to stay in.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. All right, let's move on.
Okay, I'll go back, because I, since we're like in capital plans, I've like just went forward a little bit. So is everybody okay with the list of updates since January thirtieth? Like, is there more questions on that list?
The only thing I wanted to engage council in a conversation about, in the community enhancement grant, we put forward half the amount of funding for the outhouses at the campground, at the, at the River Access Society's campground. And we, we just did two of the four because the conversation was going on with, I think it's, uh, Flynn Row about their ability to fund some of that too, because there's a deficiency in, in outhouses at a lot of facilities. And we thought they should be. And I know there's still an ongoing conversation with Dave Selden at Flynn Row and the Man from Access Society to see if there's funding for that. If there isn't funding for that, and we want to, council wants to be able to fund a whole, I do think the province should be funding some of this. But if they don't pull through, I guess the conversation was with council about, and I can't remember how much additional it was for two more outhouses.
We funded half of them, twenty.
So we did ten of twenty, so the next two would be an additional ten?
I think it was fifteen to thirty.
Anyway, I just wanted, I got an email from the River Access Society asking, because they hadn't heard back from Flynn Row, but I believe they have heard back from Flynn Row. So I'm just wondering, maybe to prosecute Christine, if council, I guess we have contingency if we so choose, council decides to put another ten or fifteen thousand into that project, they have a lot of people in the budget to do that, I would like your data.
Well, to your point, the contingency generally, we, we don't end up using the entire amount through the year. And that's generally where we take any of the additional grants from if they come forward. It's, it's up to council, obviously. If you did want to put something in, this would be the time.
How much do we have in contingency?
We have fifty thousand per year that we assign to the general fund, and then we have smaller, about twenty-five thousand for each of the utility funds in case of emergencies or issues that can arise.
And have we used up our entire contingency for this year?
This last year, we still had about thirteen thousand left when the smoke cleared on the air.
So that will go over.
We don't usually carry any of the operating budgets forward unless it's a designated project.
I would put forward that we put the remainder of the contingency for this year into that.
For 2017.
That was my question, how much is in contingency for this 2018 budget?
Oh, yeah, I don't think it's changed since last little bit.
Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand every year, yeah. So Christine, if we wanted to take the third, I want to let, yeah, I want to, I think, if we, if we, in two weeks from now decide to fund, one week from now, three days from now, decide to fund this because the province doesn't come through from last year's remainder of contingency, how would we go about doing that?
We ask that any, what we'll call late granters, come back to council as a delegation and complete the grant in aid. Because they've already completed the community grant application, they would just put a delegation forward and council could. Or if you don't want a delegation, you just need to provide us a resolution objection.
Because I know this, this is ongoing conversation with Flynn Row right now, so I don't want to usurp that. I want to give them the opportunity to do the right thing.
Yeah, so with that in mind, my thought was, why don't we just take that thirteen from last year? and add it, can we just carry it forward into this year's? So instead of 50, it becomes 63?
So thank you. That was my understanding of what you just said.
Okay.
We were just going to roll it to contingency for any use that council wants. And then you can define later how you use it.
Yeah, and that's what I understood.
Okay, I wasn't playing, sorry.
So we don't need a motion about it, or do you want a motion?
It, well, we can put it in the bylaw. We always, motions, motions are easier for us to make sure we've got everything.
Second by council raise that the $13,000 remaining in council contingency be added to this year's council contingency to the amount of 63,000. Peter? Oh, all in favor? Oppose, most in favor.
Can we make sure you get the vote here?
Okay.
Oh, and I did have a question on this.
Go ahead.
The 23 to 198 we see there for equipment reserve, is that the snow clearing attachment for the little truck?
No, actually, we have a bylaw, as council's aware, for the equipment reserve. And every time we put into equipment, it changes the amount that we have to contribute to the reserve. And so comings and goings of what comes out and what goes in changes the amortization and how much we have to contribute per year. So this is just an adjustment on our equipment reserve to manage that bylaw.
And my question is, whatever happened to that? I know we had a discussion with operations about that. Did that make it into the budget or is it still out there somewhere?
It's still out there, so we, I've got it on my to-do list to review if we want to maybe look at supplementing the equipment reserve in the future. I know council's had several conversations at the moment, as I understand.
You're talking about the snow blower, right?
Yeah. Oh, the snow blower. I think it's on, it's on the next slide. Yeah, it's coming. Sorry. Different, yeah. I went ahead and answered a different question.
Yeah, no, it was for the additional attachment for the...
Yes, it's coming.
Let's go there, or let's go to the next slide.
Next slide. So these are like the emerging issues. So all the issues have aroused since January 30th and are council to discuss.
And they're currently not in the 6.2?
No. Well, you're right, yeah. They're not.
And they're all going, they're all currently allocated to general where the taxation?
Usual ones.
Yes. The cemetery master plan is planned for 2019. And staff would like to bring it ahead to 2018.
So perhaps we can talk through?
Maybe we need staff to present on that.
Yes, I think that would be a good idea. So the soccer wall, I believe, was a council, originated with council in a discussion at a previous meeting, don't know exactly which one, regarding getting, it was the community and community services. Bob came and presented, Mr. Smith and Suzanne Virgin came in and talked about what would it possibly take for the soccer wall to be completed now. They believe that this $55,000 would be required to do that project.
Do we not have funds in the Canadian Hydro Rent Fund or some other way to take it?
I can have a quick look. There is one line item for BP that has been designated for anything at Brennan Park, so I can have a quick look at that while you talk about other topics.
The, Bob and Suzanne were here. They talked about needing to unroll the remainder of the term that we have. So has that been done to get this estimate or are we still really out of estimate?
Is this?
No, through the chair, that, that is the estimate based on buying new materials and doing it properly with new materials. So it could be less than that, but this is, this will be new material.
Well, I'm just curious, but if we have, since we wouldn't be going into it to this degree, then what do you think?
Correct. If that material is usable, correct, it would be less than that.
And to the emerging issues, I'm also looking at mine on the capital on page eight. I noticed the steam generator at Brennan Park failed in the steam room there. Is that an item that we'll see coming up or is it something that should be on here?
No, it's already... Christine, you guys are in a little bit of mood over there. Anything you want to share with?
No, I was just making sure with Ms. Rivera that the soccer wall, 55,000 was the total cost because we do have $10,000 that was not spent for the wall that we could pull from accumulated surplus. So I was just verifying that she hadn't already done that and that it was really a $65,000 project.
But it's really 55?
But it is 55, so 10,000.
So 45 is the same here what we have to come up with?
Correct, which I'll look at.
And you will look at other revenue sources for that? What is the office space?
The office space is, we have to reconfigure musical hall to create an HR manager position office, and that's going to be the positive. So we are bursting at the seams, as you know, and so you can still have a closed office for the HR manager.
Who's taking up a juxtaposition?
The replacement for juxtaposition. So the difference is that the HR team used to have three people in an office, but an HR manager needs a confidential office. So we're making the HR office smaller and creating a second office beside it that's enclosed with the meeting space. The compliance officer, this is a recent addition in terms of an employee that we'd like to present to council. It's twofold. One, it's around streamlining and assisting with the development services side of the building in terms of planning and building risk in terms of the ability to administer all the legislative requirements that are involved in the applications and coming forward to council. We've had a lot of things fall through the cracks in terms of public hearings, letters that go out. We've got planners doing, you know, public hearing notices. They fall through the cracks additionally, and Robin might, if you want, expand on this. So far this year, we had 10 FOI requests in the first five weeks of the year. And the capacity in legislative services is bursting. And so we feel that this position, we believe that this position would help the organization as a whole as well as we brought this team of FOIs to ensure that we minimize that risk. And I know that council's priority is to continue to streamline development services and this will assist in that. So it's annualized for this year, and then next year it would be service level increase of another 40,000.
So it's all total eight?
Correct.
Any even questions about that? Well, I mean, in one respect, we could just slow down.
We can slow down development, certainly. But the FOI pressure is big and the compliance for generally in development services is a gallop. I don't know, Robin, if you can go away and...
Go ahead, go ahead.
So what's happening currently is there's not brain trust in planning and somewhat in the entire development services area where people are coming to Shar and I, I would probably say eight hours a week just with questions around the letters going out, public hearing notices. We're having to redo board of variance notices, bump off meetings because there's errors in what's going out. We're catching them late. We're not doing ads for public hearing notices. And then we're having to bump the hearing itself, come back to council, do a new request for dates, and it's on and on. There's registrations, there's things in land development agreements. It's somebody who knows the legislation, the local government act inside and out, who can assist in that area because they are flat out busy. And it's not a slam or it's not a criticism of anything going on over there. They absolutely need some help with legislative compliance and ticking all of the checkboxes. We have a lot of new staff. We have a lot of new staff who are not fulsomely trained because of circumstances that have happened in the planning department, and they need some help. We have planners doing clerical work, which isn't a good use of their time. We have building inspectors doing clerical work, which is not a good use of their time. And this is, this is an administrative clerical position to help make sure that those legislative boxes are ticked. And then with the FOI side of the house, we're slammed. All Charlene is doing and Melissa right now are processing and managing FOIs. And a lot of it are things that arise from the planning and engineering. So we're hoping that having somebody here who can help with these things and get information and make sure the statute is being adhered to is going to help overall and reduce our risk because everything that's being missed right now creates risk. And so this is a small amount of money to keep us out of court.
So when the auditor general for local governments here, they provided feedback on just our use of support staff across the organization. And then I know we've engaged Jeff to look at a workforce planning model. So why are we not using those tools? Why are we not looking at templates so that errors can't be made? Does this fill in the number kind of idea? Like, I'm trying to figure out whether this is a process issue or can we wait? Is it till we have a plan for all of our resources?
Mayor Heisman, through you. We do have processes in place, absolutely. At this point, it's, we feel, we believe it's urgent from a capacity and liability, risk point of view. We're certainly open to waiting for the workforce planning. What's occurring is that we're paying people too much to do something that an administrative clerk could be doing, whether it's building inspectors, planners, Charlene and Melissa. We can continue to look along as we have and wait for the workforce planning. It's not our recommendation, but certainly it's up to council's discretion, definitely.
Thanks. And I think that going forward, that is exactly when I see all these little fill-in things, fill-in positions in the economic development as well, I feel the same way about compliance officer. But I completely, I actually see a great need for a position that relate, that actually integrates with the public and knows legislation so that our regular staff can, can get the work that they've been assigned done. And that, you know, it's really distracting away from work for staff. So I appreciate that this position has been added so that Char and Robin aren't constantly distracted from being managers. Often the questions are just basic questions that can be answered by a third party. So I'm not sure if .5 FTE is enough. I guess we can review the amount of workload.
It's just for .5 for this year because it's only half a year.
We're already halfway through the year, but then next year maybe.
As Linda said, it will be a full-time position next year, so we have to be accounted for.
Right, but I feel the same way about all the positions being added in the general fund as well for all these projects that we do. Then we get grants, like we are extremely successful at grants, but I don't think, with that success comes a huge amount of work. And that we often don't think far enough forward to fund the work that comes with a grant, and then it becomes overwhelming for staff because the work has to be done in the year that the grant's given. So funding for staff, really, I don't feel like we have enough of us funding for staff to be, I think that we are stretched as far as our economic development and our planning, but the amount of work is horrible right now in the community.
Mayor Heisman, two things, if I may. The first is, want to be clear with council that as a management team, we did scrutinize this quite a bit in detail from, is this a process systems issue? Is this a training issue? And we visited that quite thoroughly. Believe me, I had to be convinced to bring this forward in that vein. And so we did look at that before bringing this forward. Second, in terms of the concern around economic development, there is a posting currently right now. It's a temporary position to backfill, similar to what we did with planning in the OCP, the work that's happening, but it's time, what's the word I want to know? It's finite, so the position is temporary based on the funding for those projects. And that's how we fund. We have extraordinary projects above the normal regulated.
I wonder, I haven't had, but then I wouldn't mind entertaining a motion to close.
Yeah, if it's a position that's going to save us money, then it makes sense to me. And we will slow down. I mean, there is a slowdown coming eventually. Is that going to be a permanent position?
Like all positions, Mayor Heisman and Henry, and especially in light of the workforce planning coming forward in the spring is that if there is contraction in the development services area, absolutely that's a major deal. The other side of it is the legislative requirements, which themselves are not going to slow down. But certainly we're always looking at things in the way to make sure that the faculty meets what we're trying to deliver.
Motion to close for personnel-related issues, move by Tess, I think by Doug. All in favor? Oppose? Motion carries? Thank you, Kelsey. We're back in the committee, the whole meeting, and we are on our financial plan review. Let's go back over to Melissa. Look, maybe my question quickly before we go on is just trying to understand from a timing point of view from the meeting, how, what we have yet to go through.
Okay. The key issue is to get through this and see what of this council wants in the budget. And then we're probably, I think after that, just going to ask you permission to bring it to the financial plan bylaw or not. I think that's where we're at.
Okay, so we're on the compliance officer. Linda, do you have any, I mean, this is a last-minute request. Do you have any final thoughts about that?
Yeah, Mayor Heisman, I recognize that we're in the midst of a workforce review, which will provide a much more strategic overarching look at our capacity and what departments need and how to structure them. So the timing of this isn't great. That said, as the CAO, I was given a direction to better streamline development services with the eye to making application processes more simple, I suppose, more smooth and faster. That's my understanding anyway. Additionally, we feel that we're, we believe at this point that the load on legislative services, planning and building is such that we're paying people too much to do this work. We feel it would be more efficient and reduce risk.
Is there another position proposed in this year's budget that you think we could take off?
At this point, we haven't suggested that.
So, you know, I recognize there's a directive to streamline, but streamlined is a long-term planning process. This still feels like a band-aid to me. I'm not inclined to support this one. Happy to support positions once the CAO has had an opportunity to look at what a streamlined planning process looks like and an appropriate target operating model. I prefer to wait until our workforce review is completed. So I just don't think we keep adding staff and adding staff. I'm not sure that's always the problem that needs to be solved.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I've never been in an organization that's had a compliance officer. I guess in my previous life, that was me, but I think in an organization like this, from my perspective, with a lot of legislative factors and controls and requirements, protocols, pressure, litigation pressure, compliance pressure, the position like that is justified when we're busy. And when, well, probably when we reach this level and to maximize the efficiency of the organization so you get people doing things that they're better at and somebody focusing on jobs that maybe they're not as good at or don't have the time for. So I can support this. I think, other than taxation, I think inevitably that's the source of funding. But I think I can support this.
I was just wondering when we're getting the review that Karen was talking about, the position?
Would you use the end of April 2018?
February, March, April, three months. And how long will that take? Three weeks, eight weeks?
And would this be immediate, Mayor?
Mayor Heisman, as soon as the budget was adopted, we would force for the position.
Thanks. I'm inclined to support this, the same, I feel the same as Doug. I really think that if staff are being distracted from the work that we want them to do. The other positions in economic development, there are grants in place that that work was supposed to be done with, and the money should have been budgeted within the grants to fill the work positions. I would rather take out the, some of those positions that should have been funded through the $150,000 grant. When you apply for a grant, you should apply for the grant, including your staffing to complete the work, not adding staffing after completing the work. So I'd be more inclined to look at those budget items, but compliance officer, it seems like a necessary thing for this organization, so I'm going to support it.
Thank you, Mayor Heisman. The contracts and the grants that economic development pursued, those dollar amounts do translate into capacity. And, you know, the prominent example is the Smart Cities application, which originally wasn't on economic development's work plan, but gave, you know, staff gave council the option to pursue it and also asked for $60,000 to resource it in order to do it. So that was resourcing. So I'm not sure, maybe I.
Sorry, $50,000, correct?
We have. It was fifty, sixty, whatever. But, I mean, we added the budget to increase the capacity back.
Yeah, but there's also, I'm sorry, can I follow up?
Yeah, I don't want to get distracted from.
No, yeah, but there's a $150,000 grant from the Regional Economic Development Organization. There's all the, we have micro grants all over the place in that, in that part of our organization. And then we have like $25,000 and $100,000, and we have a whole bunch of other positions added. And I just, you know, I see that if you're going to apply for a grant, I agree with the Smart Cities one, that's not one. I'm more thinking of the other, Regional Economic Development. We also have the website development. There's all these micro things going on that we're not completing, that are not on time, that either we have to look at capacity or hire under the grant, not add positions.
Mayor Heisman, I guess I need some clarification on what projects aren't being outlined. And then second, each of those grants, in terms of what the money is used for, includes resourcing PTE. And let's come up with that with the.
I'm going to ask council to just table, we can talk about economic development. I just don't want to lose sight of this particular one. I realize you're putting this in context with other priorities that you have, but let's perk that one and we'll focus on the compliance officer.
Yeah, I can support this. I think Karen raises some solid points, but I think that's just what Robyn said, especially giving ourselves open to liability.
Yeah, at this point, I'll come to you, Ted, in a second. I actually, I would like for us to finish this workforce evaluation to determine exactly where the efficiencies are. I think there are some process-oriented things that we can, particularly on the planning side of things, more checklist and that type of thing that I think can help with some of those issues.
The FOI one is an interesting, I mean, we have these amplitude of things that those staff, depending on if there's a busy news cycle, communications is crazy. If we have lots of FOIs, legislative services goes crazy. So this is where I'd rather see us at this point, before we've done this workforce evaluation, to maybe just bring in more casual and backfill a bit to get through those times as opposed to creating a whole new position at this point. Is that possible?
Mayor Heisman, it's possible. I mean, certainly this position is one where it's, there's definitely technical expertise in terms of the local government act, challenging to find that from a casual perspective. But I do hear you in terms of the fact that the workforce plan is constantly needed.
I mean, I'll explain a little bit more. I mean, I know we're reacting to a particular concern, but from my point of view, I think a lot of our savings, efficiencies can be done through a procurement person, for example. And that might alleviate pressure on admin and legislative services and financial services with that position and build capacity that way. So I'm not, I'm just not sure this is the position that's going to get the efficiency that we want. And it has come up at the very last minute, which is a little concerning, and it's just before the workforce plan. So at this point, I'm kind of thinking that we create a checkbox-type thing for planning so that we don't have these mistakes. And we figure out how to deal with FOI in a more efficient manner. I mean, people have to understand, FOIs are great. They do take a lot of time and effort and money ultimately, so.
Mayor Heisman, if I could be so bold, recognizing this is a council decision, if there's a compromise around funding, this as is now in terms of getting the casual or part-time or temporary support, once the workforce plan is completed going into 2019, we would know what that looks like, whether it's a service level change for 2019 or not.
Then you need 40.
I mean, that's, that's a full-time resource starting in July to help with capacity.
I go that way, and then I go that way, and then I go that way.
Well, that's what we have discussed.
So it boils down to, I'm listening to staff. I mean, I don't know what's going on, but I think that when Linda says, can she be that bold? I'll say, yep.
Okay. Any more comments on the compliance officer? Well, I think if we can not articulate, I'm worried about that without this workforce plan. Maybe you can bring it back to us in a different ask. Is that possible? Just so it's not articulated specifically like this in the budget.
Well, I like what you said too, though. You know, like, when you do the workforce plan, this will be reevaluated.
So, yeah, I wonder, rather than getting a title, that it is a backfill or a support function for .5 FTE and it's contingent, and it's just for 2018, and it's contingent on the workforce plan. And if it was more general and we could redistribute that role or change it if we need to based on what's in the plan that comes forward, I'm willing to compromise in that direction. But I don't, I don't want to see a new position created yet.
So the workforce plan is, hopefully comes to us at the end of April. I mean, is it a way, is it a way we can postpone this decision? I worry about the thought of trying to hire a temporary person for a position like this. I just don't think this is, as I made the comment earlier, it's not something you just want to union how and send somebody over. This takes real expertise. And I just, I'm not sure how practical it is to think we're just going to find somebody like that for this type of position, a true compliance officer, the way I envisioned that person. So I'm not sure that that's a really, I mean, it may happen, just to prove me wrong, but I'm not sure that that's a really viable alternative. I think if we're going to compromise, the idea would be to postpone the decision. If the workforce plan indicates that that is a valid position, then make the decision. But I don't know how to deal with that in the context of the budget because I think by that time, we'd like to have the budget kind of finalized by that point. We're very close to it. And so I'm looking for maybe a little guidance. Is there some kind of wiggle room in there?
And the way, it says compliance officer up there, but as it was described, it doesn't actually sound like a compliance officer, and it was articulated as a clerical position. It's not a position, maybe I'm getting this wrong. It's not a, you know, we're saying planners are too educated to do this, you know. I'm trying to understand, my understanding was, it's a, it's a more clerical position. It's not necessarily a specialized position. I think a true compliance officer may be that, but I'm not sure what I heard that. This is?
Yeah, Mayor Heisman, I think the confusion may have been, I mean, maybe I can ask Robert to explain, but it's clerical in terms of its processes, but it's specialized in terms of local government act understanding. So they're not quite as high as a planner, but someone that understands local government act and legislation. Certainly trying to fill it with casual hours or part-time would be challenging, and I don't know that it would meet the needs that we have. Here in Council, Ray's solution is ideal because then we would wait until the workforce plan, because ultimately we didn't want to hire this till July anyway. I just don't know if there's a budget mechanism to do it.
Thank you, Mayor Heisman. It definitely makes it more complicated to have to amend a plan over eight positions. So, I mean, you could look at it a couple different ways. You could increase your contingency for council and then decide to use it for something like this after the workforce plan. You could put in a line item that indicates that you consider it from, you know, the outfall of the workforce plan. You could give it a budget for that to be, started to be implemented in 2018. You could, you know, I won't fund an ongoing position from accumulated surplus if I have a choice, but, but if you're just looking at it as being a stopgap until next year, you could consider that. Again, I'm not a fan of that approach, but there are ways to, it really comes down to whether you think there's going to be enough outfall of the work plan that a position might be needed for part of a year, regardless of what it is. We could make that work into the budget.
Yeah, I like the idea of adding it to contingency, adding 40,000. And the reason I say that is that I recognize that that means we're taxing for it in this year. But if I understood the compromise comments that were made, even if we backfill with temporary staff, we're still talking about a budget item for this year. So I think the real question is how to deal with the individual not being practical to hire temporarily if we make the decision that we need that person to have the funds available for it. In either event, we would be taxing for it this year. And so if we just put it in contingency and leave the decision to actually hire or create the position until after the workforce plan, then we have the funds to deal with it if we choose to.
Well, I'm still at 100% thinking we should wait until after, I mean, about when do we start saving money? Now or after the plan?
The saving of the money is from lawsuits, correct? It's not from efficiency.
Well, it's from letting planners do planning and not making them write obviously the documents.
Because they would still have to write a lot of it. They, we'd have a compliance, someone checking them.
Well, I heard someone say, this job will save us money.
On lawsuits. Reduced risk.
On lawsuits.
It was reduced risks.
It wasn't saving money? Nobody said save money. Well, it was the same thing.
Potentially. I think this is, it's been chronic at the last minute, and so there's lots of confusion about it. What I'm hearing from council is we want to make sure that we provide something in the budget to address this issue. This may not be the solution. We want to make sure the workforce strategy is inputting into that. And we don't necessarily want to get into a whole position for that.
I don't like the idea of putting this in council contingency. I think that's a sneaky way to cover up a service level increase. So I think whatever line item is in the budget, it should say something like workforce plan contingency position or something like that. But it just needs to be very transparent and we can't, I don't think, deal with it through council contingency. And then we deal with it moving into next year's budget. And we did that with an HR position over the last two years. We put in a .5 position and then we revisited, and we still managed to hire someone. So I don't buy the argument that people don't take jobs just because they're not full-time.
I think we should reduce something else in this, in the original issues, like the snow blower. We just finished purchasing, like, if we want to take money off, like, the snow blower attachment, we just finished purchasing a $200,000 trail machine. But like, why don't we revisit if we're worried about.
We're going to look at the other ones too. Absolutely.
Yeah, I would prefer to leave this exactly as it is. Have it say exactly what it is, because that's exactly what it is. It's compliance officer, it's a half-time position, and we should be hiring one to reduce risk, and reducing risk is one of our public obligations. So I prefer to take something else off or look at reducing something else than leaving us at risk because we're doing things off the side of our heads.
Linda, I'm wondering if you can come back with this articulated a different way because we, the general idea that we want to not define this until we actually have the workforce plan, but we want to make sure that we have the ability to act on this. Back with something in that regard or, and some way to fund it? I mean, if they're not talking to change.
We can certainly put the project or the service level change in as a workforce plan implementation contingency.
Perfect. Is that, anyone opposed to that?
I was going to make the motion we do that. So, I mean, I'm not sure what Linda would come back with would be different, but.
No, I just wanted to give that.
Just the added line item, I take the council's point, so put in a line item for temporary work person of some nature.
I think how Christine articulated it is workforce contingency.
Workforce planning contingency and add that to the budget.
Move by Council Ray, second by Council Kent. I think we've talked about this enough. All those in favor? Yeah, go ahead. Clarity though, from 2018.
2018 budget.
So not a service level change, but a special project? Is that what you'd like?
All those in favor? Opposed? Snow blower.
If I might, because on a couple of these things, we asked for other information, for example, the soccer wall funding options. When might those come back to us?
I can talk to you about them right now.
Excellent.
So we believe that 10,000 should be an accumulated surplus already for this project. I think that's how much the funding source was for the wall when it didn't occur. And then the only thing in the community amenity contribution provision that I can find so far would be the Canadian Hydro. There is about $96,000 of residual that hasn't been used for Sorka Edal, all of our trail groups. So there is some capacity there that you could do this from that if you wanted to. Generally, we try to reserve the community amenity contributions for growth-related type of things, but.
That's a good thought on the, we've got it in topic pitches right now, but the outages for the Macon River Access Society campground could come out of this hydro fund as well.
It could.
And that's actually, it's a recreation-oriented, it's actually Macon River Access Society. It was put on the river. I mean, there's a good connection and everything. So perhaps we, if necessary, if the progress doesn't come forward with, I think they should responsibly do, but that's just a little dig more than anything, that that's where we fund that from and not our contingency.
I would just need to identify that, please, in the plan. So if you'd rather do that than the accumulated surplus rollover of the, you know, the surplus out of this year's contingency, which is how you're proposing to potentially do it now, I would be taking it from the SEAC provision instead.
And then the soccer wall could also be predominantly funded through there as well.
You do have capacity to do that?
Ted, Doug.
Just on the soccer wall, I'm sure hoping that it's kind of a priority for everybody this year to get her done, kind of for soccer season.
So I was going to move that we add the soccer wall $55,000 to the budget, funded 10,000 from accumulated surplus, which I think is available, and the balance from, was it?
The Canadian Hydro Recreation Fund. Set by Peter? Yeah, go ahead.
And so Gary, but that's, that 55 there is contingent upon then rolling out what we have to see if it's adequate or not. So it's up to 55?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be our max cap on it.
That's always that. I'll call the question on that. Do you want to speak on that?
No.
All those in favor? Opposed? Terries?
I just have a financial question about the contingency.
About what?
The contingency.
About last year's contingency?
Yeah. Just want the $10,000, the $13,000 left over for the, that we had moved forward was without the $10,000, and that was what we had left over after everything.
was without the $10,000, and that was what we had left over after everything's completed.
That's great. We'd be moving the contingency from fifty to sixty-three thousand with the, with thirteen thousand of it not being taxation.
We can still do that.
You still can do that?
Yeah. And the $96,000 in the reserve that wasn't spent on, that was $96,000 that was left over after Sorka.
Yes, my best estimate right now is that we have some room still in...
I think that's top of the...
Soccer doesn't take all of it.
No, I know, and then $96,000 is...
Well, we've got, it's about twenty thousand a year.
That's a cumulative buildup of the ten grand per year that's up behind.
Could, would council consider adding the thirteen thousand contingency from last year and reducing this year's contingency to that amount? So it's still $50,000 is what we have, but we'd be bringing thirteen from last year's. I think that's almost a good way to do it. So contingency just doesn't keep building up, because we don't use it all, we taxed for it last year. We don't use it all. We, fifteen thousand minus thirteen is thirty-seven, and we actually are taxing for thirty-seven this year, and we're bringing forward thirteen for last year.
So my only caution on that would be, you did used to have a hundred thousand dollar contingency. We dropped it to fifty. If you drop it effectively now to thirty, what would it be, thirty-seven, that's now your year-over-year operating budget for contingencies. So just so you don't lose sight of that.
Yeah, yeah, good point.
Susan?
Yeah.
Don't remake the point if it's already made.
Right, I'm not in favor of reducing contingency, but, and also, we just spent it all, we already spent the thirteen thousand dollars on, unless we're moving it over to the ninety-six thousand dollars.
We haven't spent the thirteen thousand dollars anymore.
Of the outhouses. I thought we were moving it forward for the outhouses.
With the possibility.
I think we're looking at the Canadian Hydro Fund for the outhouses.
And then it was, can we find out what the full amount is then? Because thirteen wasn't, was it fifteen or is that?
They had made a request. I'm sorry, I don't remember. It's off in my head. I could pull it up, but it'll take me a few minutes. This thing's very slow. But we funded half of it, so ten thousand seems great, but I'd have to look at it.
Yeah, so whenever the full amount is, if we're going to fund it, fund it for the full amount, I was just using the leftover contingency. If we're moving it over to different funding.
So I might get some clarity around that if we can get maybe a motion as to whether I'm moving the thirteen for that or removing the thirteen and we're funding from CAC. I think Melissa's looking at me too, so I think we might need some clarification from council as to what your direction is, please.
So the choices are use the Canadian Hydro Reserve to fund the outhouses if the province doesn't forward and do it, or use last year's leftover contingency, either or.
So how would it reflect differently in the budget? I mean, do we have to make a decision about the Canadian Hydro Fund now, or can we just do that in August if we wanted to, for example?
I'm just trying to think. We do try to specify which provisions we're drawing down, although the bylaw is fairly high level. We do put accumulated surplus and provisions on the same line in the bylaw. It does just help us with clarification at your end what we're drawing down on and making sure that that's in keeping. So we could get away from that or get away with that legally, but it's difficult as we produce budget materials and stuff to indicate which pot of money we're sourcing.
So we still have to move the thirteen thousand dollars forward in order to use it in 2018?
Yes, we would carry that as a draw from accumulated surplus. We would bring contingency up to sixty-three thousand, and then, which is where we normally would fund our granting programs from.
So do I, would it be appropriate to move the fifteen thousand dollars, be, no, fifteen thousand dollars for the outhouses, the actual amount? I only said thirteen because thirteen was what was in contingency. So if we can draw down fifteen from the hydro grant...
We can do that at any time in the future if it's in contingency, correct?
Yes, contingency is a line item. We end up running it wherever. It allows us to make an expenditure up to fifty thousand.
We can take fifty, no, the hydro.
You have to make a decision now.
I just want to make, I just want to make it clear too. We have funded part of it from community enhancement grants, right? Everyone remembers that? So this does be the part that was unfunded at this point?
That's right.
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm clear too.
Yep.
And the reason I like contingency still is because we still don't know whether or not the province is going to step up. And so we don't have to make the decision today. Because if we make the decision today to fund it from the hydro reserve, the province is going to say, why bother, obviously. So I want to postpone that decision till we know whether or not, and whether, we only transferred thirteen over. I mean, the decision about how much we contribute to what the outstanding balance is, is still to come. So we don't even know what that number is exactly.
Okay, can we move on? Snow blower.
Who would like to talk to the snow blower? I believe that was a council suggestion.
Yeah, and Doug.
Yes, it was. And it was, council asked that this be brought forward as an option. And so without repeating the entire discussion we had, I would move to add it to the budget to be funded from accumulated surplus.
Moved by Council Race, seconded by Council Kent.
All the question, all those in favor? Opposed?
Just a point on that. If we go out and spend 250,000 on a fancy snow machine, make sure it's got a snow blower in it next time.
Well, if we had actually budgeted 250, it would have had a snow blower, but we budgeted 210, so didn't have a snow blower. Very simple answer there, yeah.
Yeah, well, it's an old...
We need a snow blower for a snow machine truck.
Yeah, that's right.
So, council.
So cemetery master plan. Why is staff wanting to bring this forward right here?
Mr. Buxton.
Thank you. It's simply a timing issue. I know we had a very brief conversation when we pushed it out to 2019. We've got ninety-six foot earth burial plots left. We've been using them thirty-two a year for the last few years. That's sort of our average. So in 2020, we're four. If we do the master plan in 2019, we're doing the over, the overburden removal and replacement in 2020. We are working at the time that we run out of plots. So it's a timing issue. It will be very tight. If there are any delays on planning or the overburden removal, there's a possibility we may run out before we get to having more land available. So it's simply, as long as council is clear that this is, it's going to be really tight to do the master planning in nineteen and the site prep in twenty-twenty.
Can I ask this stupid question about what do we get for $40,000 cemetery master plan?
Well, there are a number of, one is a financial model, which we currently don't have, or a robust one for the cemetery. The second one is a layout. I mean, there are cremation gardens, columbariums, foot earth burials. There are changing patterns of, it's a plan to have to accommodate all of those, the current and patterns for deceased, and the financial model.
And that costs $40,000?
Yes.
Does this just look at land, or does it look at different options for burial?
Burial, cremation, columbariums. All options remain.
All options to fund the cemetery. And land acquisition, does it look at relocating?
No, we have land adjacent that I believe we have either acquired or will acquire from the province.
Is running a cemetery required under the community charter or local government? No. So I don't think we should be running a cemetery. I think we should outsource it. Someone else can do a master plan.
Nobody wants it.
And just to clarify, we are the, you are the board for the cemetery right now under legislation, and you would have to maintain the cemetery in perpetuity unless you were able to sell it. So just to keep those things in mind, you might be able to close it in year 2020 if you chose to, but we would maintain the maintenance in perpetuity off of the cemetery fund, of this trust fund that we carry in the back from the endowment. And it's not that high.
So when we get this cemetery master plan that comes up with a financial model, and council today determines it's really not a function of the municipality decides to privatize, privatize it somehow or whatever, will this master plan outline those options? And just so you know, it's a very political recharge, personal issue. So I don't want to preempt the conversation in the meeting. It'd scare people, but will the master plan do a bit of that evaluation?
Exactly, could be.
And currently, it's proposed to be funded through taxation?
Yes, really, the only other thing I can think of is our lovely accumulated surplus.
From staff's point of view, it was simply, as long as council appreciates, we'll be running out at the time that we're sort of ramping up. That's the only understanding we want to bring to it.
Question, if we ran out of space and we didn't have a master plan, what would be the jeopardy in that? I mean, we, not saying that we don't do some work, but we don't have a master plan.
I think the only jeopardy is at some point we'll be simply advising people that we can't accommodate.
Do we need the master plan to expand into the added area?
I mean, we could start, that would mean moving the overburden project into 2018 or 2019, which I think is around sixty thousand, thirty... That's been sort of moved out back behind the master plan. We don't really want to do the overburden project until we have the master plan, because if it's, if it's full earth burials, there's a lot of earth work to do. If it's a cremation, a scatter garden, you don't do as much work. So that sixty thousand may be a lot less if we say, oh, you know what, we're not going to do that many full earth burials. We're going to move to columbariums and scatter gardens then. So there is a sense, there is some sense in putting the master plan and then the earthworks after.
I saw a whole bunch of hands go up. Susan, I thought it was Doug.
Yeah, I think it's really critical to do, because this is land use planning, and I think this is something that's really important for the public as well. I think it's really important to get the master plan done before we run out of space and during running out of space.
Doug?
Yeah, we're sort of in the same van, plan ahead rather than plan behind. So my only question really was the funding options. So I guess in that sort of an answer, I was looking for some cemetery reserve out there to tap into, but I don't think there is such a thing. But is this typically, do we make all our cemetery costs, they just come out of straight taxation?
So generally, we try to, so one part of the cemetery master plan, I hope, would be a review of our bylaws and fees. What I think it would probably discover is that our fees are way too low in the context of everywhere, hence why it was brought back already to raise them. So that can help fund some of the maintenance, so the overall maintenance, and then, of course, a component of that fee goes to the long-term trust fund that would take care of those lands in perpetuity once we closed. So I don't know if that fully answered your question, but the beauty of the cemetery master plan, I'm looking to Gary, because I don't know the full breadth of what he's proposing, but normally would be a review and a rehash of the bylaws themselves. We certainly would have to go through a process with Consumer Protection Board to be able to move to scatter gardens and things like that. It would all have to be vetted and reviewed. So it's a fairly extensive process to rewrite all those bylaws. And then I assume a component of this master plan would also be to actually see what the ground use would look like and to replot the capacity of the lands, depending on, I mean, you can, there's all sorts of creative ways you can deal with cemeteries now. You can stack and all sorts of fun things that probably aren't in our bylaws currently.
Yeah, I know it's cheaper here than most places, so for that reason we need it. And if we do have an opportunity to relook at how we run it in 2020, we should make sure to get all that information out of it. Other than that, everything else was covered.
Council Race, are you going to propose a motion?
Yes, I'll propose that we add $40,000 to the budget funding from taxation.
Seconded by Council Kent. And are we, what, taxation over accumulated surplus?
Well, just because I think it's consistent with other ways we treat the cemetery. I could be persuaded on that, but I was just trying to be consistent with the way we dealt with the cemetery in the past and just basically tried to get all these costs recovered on fees as much as possible.
I'm not sure we, I think what the master plan is going to determine is that we're not covering our costs at all on this.
And perhaps that's Council Race's point, is that they probably haven't contributed to accumulated surplus? Is that...
No, I think you're reading a lot into it.
Okay.
And the reason why I was thinking accumulated surplus is just because this is a one-year thing. We're hopefully not going to need another one of these for twenty years or so. And so I see it as sort of a special project, more of a special project type of thing as opposed to a general taxation type of thing. And that's why I was leaning towards accumulated surplus myself.
Well, I can, I'll change the motion. To be funded from accumulated surplus. I don't think it was second, it was second.
On that, I'll ask a question. All those in favor? Opposed? Council Kent?
Karen?
You have anything in the office, please?
Oh, I thought we had done that one.
No, it's put in, funded by, help me.
Tax would probably be fine. Tax not going to...
Taxation.
Moved by Doug, seconded by Karen. All those in favor? Opposed?
Mayor Heinzman, I'm not sure if you understand, the BC housing fees to be waived. I've just asked Mr. Wickham if he could go back and ensure that the, with which project it is, Gary, the housing project.
I think it's under one roof.
Under one roof, thank you. Under one roof, the memorandum of understanding with BC Housing looks at us waiving certain development fees. I just have asked Mr. Wickham to go back and look at the bylaws and make sure that those bylaws all allow us to waive fees, because if they don't, then we'd need to set up a grant.
We did the exact same thing through Central Point?
Just trying to make sure we're doing it legally.
Just want to make, I want to make sure we're doing it, but basically, this is one of the ways local governments step up to make these projects happen, so...
Absolutely. And what I've asked Mr. Wickham is if he either comes back and lets me know if there's any fees that aren't available for waiving in the bylaw, or that he comes back and amends those bylaws so that you can waive them. So that's an option to council as well. If you don't want to put a budget item in, we can review any of those budgets and bylaws and make sure that they allow you to waive fees for affordable housing.
Okay, so we just need to do a home?
Probably.
What do you need from council to make sure it's in the...
If you're comfortable with us reviewing any of the fees bylaws and adding an opportunity for council to waive those in the event for affordable housing, then that, we can go without a budget.
Okay, awesome. I think we're comfortable with that, yes.
I don't know if we're going to talk about this today, but one of the things we deferred was the money for the evacuation plan in partnership with Whistler and how much we were setting aside to get it back. And I'm wondering how much is still in the budget? Because they wanted us to fund fifty percent, and we asked the mayor to chat with the mayor of Whistler about that. So it was still sort of an outstanding decision.
Yeah, and my conversations with the mayor were, they were told they're not doing it, and we wanted in, we wanted in. If they didn't, they're just going to do it anyway.
It's anti-hooding. So, yeah, go ahead. That was my question, is are we in or are we not in? Because I think this is very important to our community.
So we're in for a certain amount. Can we just go there?
The news is just pulling the amount for you.
And you might have further conversations to discuss.
Actually, Chief Stoner has.
Go ahead, Doug.
So I have some good news. As you know, this was a two-stage project, stage one, stage two. After receiving stage one from the proprietor or the consultant, Whistler and Alexis, our agency program coordinator, had a look at it, and they weren't exactly sure that what he was delivering is what we were after. He had used or had planned to use for part two an engineering firm to get the engineering data for the highway. And that was a small portion of that big $200,000 figure. And so what Whistler and Alexis and we all together, we all looked at and said, really what we need is that engineering piece. And so what we've done is suggested, we go ahead and take just that engineering piece out of it and cut out a lot of the other things that weren't exactly what we were looking for in this program. And so it looks like we're moving ahead there for roughly, and the numbers are in front of me, about $70,000 split between two communities for the rest of it. So that's much... So that's much more specific to what we needed and actually specific to what we'd set out and asked for in the first place.
That's really encouraging here. So our current budget amount is adequate to cover that?
Hundred grand in the budget, fifteen grand from accumulated surplus, and eighty-five from the productive services provision.
So you're talking seventy split in half, so thirty-five each?
Seventy split in half, and then there would be, I think Alexis threw out a number of like ten thousand because we'd be taking on work ourselves, and normally we wouldn't be doing printing and those type of things, but yeah.
So if we had a fifty-thousand-dollar budget, we'd more than cover it? So can we amend that, Christine?
I'm sorry, I think.
It sounds like you've got over a hundred.
I'm just verifying, I want to make sure it's the same project because there's been two or three different emergency management projects. So I'm just trying to verify that, make sure we're not confusing projects so that we don't accidentally cut one we shouldn't be cutting.
See, this guy called our evacuation plan was to be right now about a one, ten, one, oh, five?
Great, okay. So yes, we can reduce the budget, but it's, it's not hitting taxation right now. It never was. Sorry, guys.
Oh, yeah.
Well, are we still getting everything we need? I mean, what about our prior planning?
Yeah, absolutely, and so what we are getting is just what we need.
So we still keep the fifteen from accumulated surplus in there to cover that? And then the other thirty-five comes from?
We'll still need some from the provision.
Do we need to actually change the budget? Because, I mean, all of these things are funded up to a point. If we don't have the need, don't spend the money. So are we putting a cap on it by reducing it? Or are we saying we're not going to spend any more period end of statement? Or do we want to leave a little bit of flexibility if something like this other ten thousand dollars, whatever that might be, comes along, do we want to have the flexibility to be able to fund it from that reserve?
Totally up to counsel, bearing in mind that what you provide here is staff's expenditure levels, so.
Well, and I think, I want to make sure there isn't scope creep on this, that we're getting exactly what we need. And so I quite agree showing that they'll drop that, this analysis, which is great. But you want to give a little bit of flexibility and make sure we're not having to come back and take five thousand dollars contingency to do what we need to do. So I think what I'm looking for is the actual amount that staff thinks it's going to cost and if the contingency goes in, and that's the number we put in the budget. Feel fair enough?
Absolutely, fair enough, and I can get that for you. I don't have it on at the top of my hand, but I can get that for you quickly.
And as long as we give it to Christine, does she?
We can move that into the bylaw based on discussions of council's comfortable with that?
Yeah, sure.
And then, and then the first fifteen would be funded from?
It's a carried forward from past year.
Okay, and the balance from the fund, from that reserve?
Okay, it's twelve-thirty, we do have a meeting, we don't have lunch coming in, right? No, so why don't we?
So just to come back to that, sorry, can make, that first fifteen, that first fifteen, I believe, was for phase one of the project, the thirty thousand dollars. And then we've already completed that project, that part, so that.
So it'll all be provisioned then?
Yeah.
Okay, so why don't we recess to reconvene at one? Okay, why don't we say one thirty, one fifteen? We are back in our meeting, our meeting on February thirteenth, and we are going to sit back the order a little bit. And we're on to four. I guess three, one, sorry, three, three. Squamish Search and Rescue Annual Presentation, welcome. Alexis, do you want to take this off or go right over to Vitek?
Oh, I can definitely just give it over to Search and Rescue.
You really put us before our lunch, that's not.
We did. It's better than how I can lunch, trust me.
We don't want to be standing in the way of lunch.
We were supposed to recess at eleven thirty and begin.
That's a voice of experience.
Thank you. Mayor, council friends, for those who don't know me, my name's BJ Shute. I'm the president of Squamish Search and Rescue. And to my right is Gerald Wolf. And Gerald is our newly-elected vice president who has ultimately replaced Tennessee Trent. You guys have met many times. Tennessee has moved to Nelson and is no longer with us, which is, yeah, super unfortunate for Squamish and certainly unfortunate for Squamish. Oh, cool.
So we're not hangry.
I can pretty much handle it.
So some of us will just review a little bit, but we wanted to come and and just show you what Squamish SAR has been up to for the last year since we were here. So we've called it our 2017 year in review, and you'll likely recognize the slide along with many of the people in here. This is our most current team picture, and it's time to update that. We have actually brought in some, some new members, and there is twelve or fourteen?
There are twelve new members.
So that's pretty exciting for us. But as you know, what it is that we do and what we're mandated to do and provide is volunteer search and rescue services around and within the district, including ground search and rescue, water rescue, which are only the rivers and the lakes. As you know, you have the marine search and rescue that does anything ocean-related, although we can assist if required weather. We have a mountain rescue team, we have our HETs or longline team, avalanche rescue, as well as rope rescue, and our prevention team that delivers the provincial, actually the national Adventure Smart Program. And it's worth noting that our prevention team, who is headed by Christine Strub and Cheryl Bass, are the highest presenting team in the province. So those, those two ladies present to more schools, more public than any other Adventure Smart team anywhere. So that's pretty cool. Couple of things that our society is responsible for is, as you guys will probably remember, is the administration and financial management of, of the team. That includes filing the reports and tracking the reports, records management, inventory management, kind of the sort of boring side of SAR, but, you know, obviously important as well. Membership tracking, training, fundraising, and some public education as well. We just had our annual general meeting, and we are calling it our sort of 2018 goals or work in progress as you, as we have here. Some of the things that we're somewhat passionate about, but also hoping to at least start, if not accomplish this year, is to work with the B.C. Search and Rescue Society, which is the province's organization for volunteers on stable funding from, from government. We are mandated to revamp our bylaws and our constitution. And with that, it's just, it's just time that we actually restructure our entire organization. So we're going to go through a process in which we do a restructuring, where we're going to bring in different groups, member groups, maybe some, some sort of business specialties, and try and have a little bit more up-to-date reflection as what it is our organization does and how the, how we work that organization. We're working right now with, with Parks to put a helipad halfway up the Seacat Gondola Trail. I don't know if you guys are familiar, there's a big lookout about halfway. And it's, it gets busy, as you can imagine. And so for us to bring a helicopter into that area can be somewhat tricky. We do have a spot picked out down below that we think would make a really good place to have a helipad. It's kind of hidden, but also accessible just off the trail. So we're working with Parks right now to, to do that. We're looking and, and we just talked outside actually a little bit more about a repeater system, a radio repeater system. You can imagine working line of sight radios in an area like this is just, it's just really inefficient. We've got lots of mountains and barriers in the way. So we're working with Seacat Gondola, and we'll be working with Alexis and the district on where we could put repeaters to improve our, our communication system, which is going to be super key for not only responding, but member safety, and I think as well for the district and the overhaul that's happening with the radio system there. And one of the things that we, we talked about last year, but I think we're going to have to go a little bit harder on it, is a feasibility of moving a structure, whether it's a CCAN or a trailer or some sort of removable structure to the Squamish school area. And I don't know what it's called, but on this, this would be the south end of the, of the playing field. There's Rogers Towers and there's an enclosed area. We're looking at that area there to put some sort of, sort of temporary base so that we can send members straight there, have some equipment, have some communications, and have some shelter, which would be really nice when we get to some of the pictures you'll see.
Is that our land?
So we were talking in conversation, I think it is our land, but we're going to get confirmation on that. The area that we talked about before with Tennessee is definitely our land with the field and school. But what he was describing to me this morning, I didn't quite understand, so that's something I'll be looking at.
That'd be a first question, that's the first, the first question, I think, is whether or not the district's line to whose it is. And then Gerald and I had chatted this morning at breakfast, like, what would be a kind of a good goal or ask for the district? But I think there'd be some, some, some help with some of the process things there. Certain things is where the district can help us along there because obviously that's your expertise and not ours.
Alexis, you had some community hub C cans. Would that be a good location to actually store, store them? If we're going to look at land acquisition for that?
So are we combining? So actually, there's already one up at school, so all the schools actually have emergency containers. And so what we'd want to do, what if we go, eventually we'll do with the neighborhood hubs is that we would actually be kind of doing a complimentary thing. So wouldn't it make sense to put one there for that particular reason because one is pre-existing? So, but in talking with them, we're thinking of maybe like an InstaCommand trailer that could be something that's portable, that could be used in major emergencies, but more of a resource for SAR. That's more of what we can see in line for that.
Yeah, there's kind of lots going on beyond the scenes there to make the decisions to what's the best place for it, what's the most practical, and you know what's going to be secure as well and safe for, for everybody involved. Yeah. She's just the same as Tennessee.
That's a comment.
So last year, we, we did ninety-five calls of those seventy-three were responses, and twenty-two were what we refer to as callouts. And those could have been anything from, not even kidding here, a wrong number, we still activate through page number, to a call that, say, Chief Stoner in the fire department took care of because it was, say, a bike accident within the district or something in the smoke plus, where we were alerted of a call and it turned out to be a non-response. And last year was the first time that we actually tracked those callouts. We always had like one number, and we informally knew that, you know, about twenty or thirty percent of them were non-responses. But the, this is the first time we've actually tracked that. We did, we tracked, and again, it's, it's tricky for us to track all of our hours, but we had over ten thousand, almost eleven thousand hours of track volunteer time last year. That's mostly training and responses. So we don't do a really good job of tracking, say, Doug Woods, who most of you know spent, I think, ten hours yesterday wiring the truck, you know, and Gerald and I are probably spending four hours today doing stuff. So that type of admin stuff, we do a pretty, I'll just say, we do a pretty poor job of tracking that, but we do a really good job of tracking the training and the callouts. So it's difficult to get an accurate number that Squamish SAR has volunteered for. I would say that easily has doubled, if not tripled, that. This year in the, out there in the community, we participate in the kids' triathlon every year. Some of our members organize it, and we also have little first aid posts all over it. We have members that, that ride with the kids just to be a sort of safety buffer for them. We participate in the Santa Claus parade every year, which is, which is lots of fun. And as I mentioned earlier, our prevention team presentations, both at, I think they're in, they are in all of the elementary schools for sure, and trailhead days as well that they, that they do. So they are definitely, definitely some of the most recognizable faces within Squamish SAR.
Yeah, I'd like just to add that we would like to kind of do more in the community and participate more, but to be honest, we're suffering from such a big workload with the tasks and the callout volume and the training that we do that, you know, it's, it's difficult to, to participate in more of those community events because we're always out on tasks.
Cool. A few more statistics, and I realized this morning that I forgot, I forgot 2017. So here's the graph up to, including last year, but basically last year, I think we were a hundred tasks. This year, we're ninety-five, so we could just move that purple line going to the right there. It still gives us an average of almost sixty calls per year over the, the past ten years, which is pretty significant for a volunteer time.
And the volume dramatically goes up in twenty thirteen.
Be interested to know what happened then.
Yeah, because the Gondola didn't really come till twenty fifteen.
No, and you know, and if you.
Well, it's twenty fourteen, late twenty fourteen, yeah.
And if you look at it too, the, the number of calls still went up, and like the Gondola went in place for sure, which added a whole bunch of people in the back country. But then, and we started doing calls at the Gondola, but we started doing less calls than the chief. So we, the numbers kind of stayed in line, but the location kind of changed a little bit too. So, you know, it's interesting to know, I've never been able to figure it out, or we've never been able to figure out how to break down that actual correlation.
The calls, winter versus summer calls, so you can get into that? Or because there is, now that the back country's open and the Gondola, are there far more callouts?
There's not, we're still doing only a few winter responses.
Interesting.
It is interesting, yeah. We did two this weekend, actually. So one at Elfin Shelter and one at Garbaldi Shelter, as well. So we, we definitely are doing winter responses, but our numbers are, are definitely lower. And we'll see a huge spike coming in sunshine and the rain weather after the May long weekend for sure. And just out of interest sake, you know, we don't do a lot of, of searching, we do a lot of rescues. The majority of our calls are medical injury-type rescues, and our, the number of actual lost people is relatively low in, in our response area. I'm not really sure why, but I think a big part of it is we don't have a ski resort. If you look at North Shore and Whistler, where they get lost skiers and duck under ropes, et cetera, like that. We just have a different sort of people, type of people that come here. And then the non-response calls is about fifteen percent, which we pull it over. I'm not really sure why I included this, but I thought it was cool. It's just the number of tasks that our members respond to. You know, obviously, the majority of, of members are sort of up into that, that fifteen to twenty percent range if you look over top of all of it. And then we have some members that, you know, respond to almost all of, all of those calls. We've got some really good pictures highlighting those members as well coming up. But it just kind of a breakdown of, of the task attendance of our, of our team there as well. And just a real quick review, Alexis and I have talked, Alexis and Tennessee talked a lot about the agreement with the district. It's, it's up this year for renewal. And so I don't think there's anything, you know, completely wildcarded in there. The, the agreement's working really well, I think, for both parties. And so moving that agreement forward, I think, is, is super important. Like I was starting to say too, the, you know, just, I think where we'll be looking at the district for in 2018, 2019 is just help with those process issues. So, you know, land tenure or, you know, helping with the radio repeaters, command van, you know, or command vehicle, whether it's a trailer, whether it's SAR buys one, the district buys one, or we do some sort of joint custody of one as well.
On that, Christine, the, the, we maintain and to ensure the fleet, and they're, they're in our fleet replacement?
There's different agreements, but generally, the, maybe Alexis can explain it better because I'd have to refresh my memory with the contract. Okay, so basically, how we've worked it out with them is that they are within our fleet, and we've signed them over, and we have a one pager that basically says they are technically ours vehicles because we need to be in our name to sign them over. But we no longer pay into the, they pay into the reserve. So it's up to, it's clearly stated within Search and Rescue Service Agreement that they have to replace the vehicles. So we will maintain them based on the twelve thousand dollars. And then anything additional to that for replacement of vehicles, they need to figure out how to fund it.
Okay, that is, I want to get through how we, how the fleet reserve is being managed.
Yeah, yeah, so we don't, we're not part of the replacement cost of that, so we fund our own replacement cost. But we do buy with the district's purchasing power. So we, we bought a new truck, if you remember last year, through your fleet agreement report, which saved us.
Yeah, just on funding, and I hear, you know, like some deal go off into the back country and due to circumstances, they get charged for being rescued?
No, so there's no fee anywhere in the province for search and rescue. No, that's a hundred percent not true.
Isn't there some incidents where they're charged?
I'm not aware of any.
I think the province has the ability to charge if, if they needed to.
Or a mountain, like Cypress Mountain.
Yeah, but if you see out of the area of Whistler, Cypress.
We've, we've absolutely never charged for rescue, and we have very strong opinions about how they should not be, be charged for. So the, the province does cover that cost for us, and then, and then the volunteers go there.
Yeah, I just heard about it somewhere.
When is this agreement, or when might it come, or do you have a schedule for that?
We don't have a schedule, it's due this year, so I think we can start negotiating. We don't have a schedule, it's due this year, so I think we can start negotiating, so to speak, at any time. I don't have the exact date, but-
So it's January of, it's due next year, January, so we're gonna start negotiations this year. Bill's gonna lead it, because I'm gonna be away. And the only thing important to note is actually this, like, 2017, we actually went over the twelve thousand dollar limit, and the Squamish emergency program absorbed the cost. So that is something to be looking at for the future.
How much was that over?
Uh, fifteen hundred.
It's under two thousand dollars. And I think it was, there was a really unforeseen, a large expense to one of the vehicles. Like a diesel turbo went to one of the vehicles, it was something like four thousand or five thousand dollars, or something like that. So it's kind of an unprojected cost there.
And so to follow up, the fuel, insurance, maintenance, all of that comes out of that umbrella of twelve thousand?
So the previous year is basically, the council has allotted twelve thousand dollars to SAR. Out of that, we take the vehicles and stuff, and if it comes to nine thousand, then we give them the three thousand. Whatever's remaining, we'll give to search and rescue. And we just, the year happens to be a year where-
And so finally, after however many years of me coming here, we brought you some pictures.
Awesome.
I was just gonna scroll through them, I didn't know how to do like an endless loop or a video or anything. So I'm not that bright, but here's some, our annual hover exit training. So every year, our members go through this training where they can, the helicopter won't actually touch down, it'll hover, and they can practice getting inserted and extricated. And there's, I just saw this is a really cool shot, so that's on the chief there, obviously. So the guy's doing a rescue there. And then some pictures from training coming up here. This is Rob Herdevy, who actually has just left our team as well, but he was a super good member. Doug and Chris Wild doing some rope training. I think that's John Howe and Nadine there doing some hats training. Martin, just having a look at helicopter blade there. Fraser, is Fraser Young, he's actually one of our highest attending members. He's probably one of the strongest human beings on the planet, too, actually, he's a really, really nice kid. A rescue hero, I think that's the backside of the chief. I think this might be Katie having a little rest here. Michelle. This year was just a typical call on the chief. This was actually a day that we had two back-to-back calls. We had a lost person in Garibaldi Park, and as we found that person, another call came in at the same time on the chief. So we managed to muster a second team, and then some of us, Gerald and myself, were two of them. We're in Garibaldi Park, and we flew straight back to the chief to help out with this. I think it was a, it was a broken vehicle, wasn't it?
Yeah.
It was a broken, but it came in as that and was treated as such. Guys here doing some winter training here just a couple of months ago. For those of you that remember Katie, I always tell Katie why her big smile. Can't see who that is there. Again, just a super cool picture there.
Where was that?
I knew you were gonna ask, but I don't know.
No, the one before it, where was that?
Oh, again, I don't know, it was a training exercise that they were doing, I think.
Oh, the mountain rescue guys.
Yeah, backside blackwood. Here's a pretty typical call in January on the chief. This was a miserable, miserable, long night here. There was two girls that got a little bit turned around on the top of Second Peak.
Yeah, was it?
And took a little tumble, and one of them was slightly injured, but did manage to walk out with some coaching. But they were quite wet and quite cold by the time we guys, actually, we were quite wet and quite cold as well, so it was pretty miserable. We had a little command center set up down in the parking lot of the chief. And pictures of that, just helping these young ladies out. Some more pictures of them coming out.
That one was interesting, because it was on that slavy rock, and then in the time that they were there, the rain turned to snow. So it went, we had like five centimeters of snow now on all that slavy rock. So we had to use ropes and stuff to assist on the way out.
It was a long, long, and the guys actually had just come from their winter training as well. So there was a lot of people that were out for quite some time. Here's a good picture of Tennessee, because I just knew you guys would be seeing him, so I thought that was a really good picture of down there. Our adventure smart team up at the base of the parking lot for Red Heather doing some avalanche awareness days. So what, these guys actually, they're quite clever, I mean, they're very polite, they're very, very nice. But when they set up a trailhead day, there isn't a single person that gets past them without having a talk to, you know, how is it that you're prepared, what is it you're doing, what is your experience level? And it's, you know, they're very, very good at bringing these people in on sort of accusatory way. It's really, really something to see, it's one of, one of the-
Do they keep data on that?
We do, yeah, we've got really good data on the number of people that they've talked to and what the conversations were. And, yeah, we do, these avalanche awareness days are a two-day event, I believe. And then we do a number of trailhead days at the chief as well in the summertime. So they'll actually put a tent up right over the trail, you have to walk under the tent to get past them, and they make sure you have whistles and water, and are dressed appropriately. And if you're not, then one of these ladies here has a little conversation with you. So that's Cheryl on the, on the right, and Christine on the left, and I think that's Cheryl's grandchildren, actually. One might be Christine's, Christine's child, and Cheryl's grandchildren. So we did have permission to use those pictures. Cheryl just showing how to survive to a class. And I always think that people look like little potatoes when they're rough. We do give out these emergency blankets for people that do get lost. And here's a good example of how you have to get past them here, so that's the, that's the chief there.
You're not getting past her.
There's no going past Cheryl without talking to, for sure. Some water team training, there's the water team down at the marina. Picture of the helicopter. This here is Chad Honey, so Chad again with Fraser is one of our sort of top contributing volunteers of 2017. He came up to a lot, a lot of tasks. There's Tennessee again, and the guy on the right, or the left there is a gentleman named Mike Tusk. So Mike is another one of our SAR managers. Usually works harder than I quit. This was an interesting call, we had a gentleman go lost in Britannia Beach. And it was a late-night call, as usual, went through the night and into the day, ended up walking out, actually, wasn't injured, which was really good. But we, with like an unofficial agreement, we got access to the Britannia Beach Fire Hall, so we were able to set up our command post down in Britannia Beach, which was really, really cool, it was absolutely ideal. They had, we were able to pull out the trucks, the guys had lots of ready to work and to set up our command system as well as guys' teams coming in to change and get ready. Here's the guys just getting ready to go on the saddle parade, sorry. Mike, just hanging out, not sure what he's doing, I don't remember that call, actually. Another call, so Half Nelson. This was, I think, a broken leg, just at the sort of bottom third of Half Nelson, where the three trails intersect there. It's one of our, this and the chief obviously are two of our areas of high probability calls, we'll call it in the summertime. It's just a busy, busy trail. Picture of the gondola, that's Christine Strub, who leads our prevention team again, out there on a task. And probably didn't mention, but you're probably all aware, is the way search and rescue is structured in the province, we have the ability, if we aren't able to fill a team, or if we need extra resources, we can call on any teams throughout the province, and we call that mutual aid. So in this case, we sent teams to Coquitlam, and you've probably all read about the dog walker who got lost and was found a few days later. So what, it was our team, our team didn't find them, but our team actually went and extricated her around with the line system that was there. So these are some pictures from that task there, looking for her and the dog. And there's a picture from when they found them and the dogs that were there. We, you'd have to actually follow John Howe to appreciate it, but we send our members in training out on a hike with John Howe as a team-building exercise, and it's pretty, it's pretty grueling. So they do a trail from the Mancom Forest Service Road up to Slawney and the backside of Third Peak, and around and back down the First Peak Trail. So this is our, this is our member training evening hike with John. And it looks like Chris and Fraser there. Katie and Tennessee with a beer, and Malcolm on the left. Some pictures from the task, I think that's out towards West River on a mutual aid. There's the guys doing some training on the gondola. Not sure what we're doing here, but John's doesn't look super impressed with whatever's going on, but picture there. It's one of our snowmobiles that we have, we have two snowmobiles along with two quads. Some mountain rescue training, and there's Chad again, hard at work cleaning things. One of the things Chad actually is quite well-known for is the work that he does. He's a carpenter, so he does a lot of work around the station, fixing up things and helping out. Team mountain rescue training, another picture of getting scraped down by the helicopter. And it looks like Katie and Penny, and they'd somehow cut Jackie's head off there, just having some fun. There's some stretcher carrier training. And I think this is actually another task, I don't think this is a training day, but that could be, could be our hover exit training. And Jackie Wilcox and Sue Nicholson there on a hike. Some more, another training day, looks like rope training there with Alex Brosh and Kathleen Sullivan. And that's all I got for you.
Awesome.
Thanks, we're happy to answer any questions or comments.
Yeah, we can sort of go into some questions as the presentation went along, but if there are any remaining questions, so, I mean, we'll go back into a negotiation this year, we'll have it ready to go early, late 2017 or 2018?
Yeah, I don't think there's any big-
Or the other way around, 2018, 2019?
Yeah, I think we start sick, I don't know what the schedule is, so we'll just figure out a schedule that it works for everybody and try and have a draft agreement in place for 2019, I guess. But I don't see it being a big process like it has been in the past, for sure, pretty smooth sailing.
I know, just wanted to say thank you for getting out there and for all you guys do. And I know sometimes you put yourselves in harm's way to get it done, and that's very much appreciated by the whole community.
Cool, yeah, the team appreciates that, they're a good bunch, for sure.
I'm just wondering, I mean, our tourism certainly invites a lot of people to come up and enjoy Squamish, and a lot of those are so that we can warrior types. And yesterday, I encountered two of them on the top of the loop trail at Mira Park. No water, running shoes, sun, you know, going down. So are there ways that we're missing to, because you guys can't be everywhere once, but we have different communications channels. How are we reaching some of the people that are coming here to enjoy our community that don't know better?
So I would say two ways, the one is with the public education that search and rescue does. So they have the treaty program, all the different initiatives they do specifically targeting areas where tourists are coming into our places and going up there. And then the emergency program, we also do a lot of public education and trying to, ours is more about emergency preparedness and preparing yourself, and theirs is more about search and rescue in the wild.
Provincial parks, gondola, do you-
Yeah, provincial parks, gondola, I mean, even the province is running recognition, like at the emergency management PC level, and they have like actual working groups formed to discuss this, because there is this place where we are making tourism a big thing, not in just our communities, but in British Columbia as a whole. Therefore, they're looking at, like, what is this thing in terms of permission?
It's tough to, we, provincially, through the BC Search and Rescue Association, we have a prevention side to it, and there's people working full-time just on prevention. We're not at the point where we have any like data to say, you know, we spent this much on prevention and it's lower than call line, although right now, it doesn't look like it has. More people are just going outside and playing, and the year is a lot easier to get, the trails are super accessible. Yeah, I don't know how we reach all of those, all of those people. But right now, we're, you know, we're doing what it is that we can, we can do, certainly within a volunteer structure, for sure.
Do you get any direct funding from the C disque gondola and/or S R D?
No, so we do, we do, the gondolas provide each one of our members actually a gondola pass. We did initially have some money from the C disque gondola, but right now, we don't have any money coming from the S R D. We've had several conversations on what it is that they could provide, and some equipment that they were gonna provide, but it's kinda gone old, actually, from last year.
Do they have a rescue team with the C disque gondola, or do they rely on search and rescue to bring people-
They have a rescue team within their tenure. So, and then if it's something that would be more technical than their tenure, they would call, would call us, but anything-
The gondola rescue?
Yeah, anything outside their tenure falls on Squamish search and rescue. So Alice Hainburg Trail, Sky Pilot, Sea the Summit Trail, or anywhere that's outside their actual tenure falls within Squamish.
Well, I re-echo what Counselor Kent said, you guys do a fantastic job. You're lucky to have so many dedicated people, and you seem to be very successful in recruiting, too, and we can certainly help with any of that communication, maybe recruiting or that sort of thing. But well done, great job.
Yeah, and thank you guys for those, for the guys' support this year as well, it's super valuable.
Quick question, do you guys have a video, just basically a promotional video or something? I know you said you could use tools, but-
It's the bad finger that hits forward.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, we really want to. We actually had, one of our members is a, I don't know if you'll call him a videographer, but it's something that we really wanna do, and it's just honestly, it's a time thing, Peter, we just really have so much.
It would be great to have, and then people just have it with the chamber, or with the adventure center, or, you know, or on the district website or whatever, just to say, you know, if you're going out there, you might see these guys, we hope you don't, but-
Yeah, for sure.
I think you could get a costume to do-
I know, yeah.
Like-
We had it actually all lined up, and then Simon moved, but, you know, and it just, yeah, it's been on the to-do list for probably two years now, so I agree, it would be such an easy thing to do. At this day and age, it'd be super easy to set up.
And you can shoot it all right here.
Yeah, there's gotta be, there's gotta be a kid with an iPhone somewhere, for sure.
Well, thank you very much, it's always a pleasure to have you here every year, and keep up the good work, you do fantastic job for our community.
Thanks, guys, thanks for having us, we'll talk soon.
I think we're gonna recess for half an hour, let's, please, come in here, thank you. We are back in the community, the home meeting, it is, we're on, we're just gonna finish up budget, and Ms. Arthur Stoss has an update on water fountains, and maybe we'll just go there right away.
Thank you, Mayor Heintzmann. Ms. Sayre, facilities manager, did pass along some information that the cost of putting in a water fountain at the rec center with the water fill station attached is about twenty-two hundred dollars per unit. So I'm not sure, once you open up walls, what you might find behind, council might wanna put a little bit extra in there, not a couple hundred dollars, but each one is twenty-two hundred dollars. We, council also asked about the water fill stations, what in addition in the washrooms would look like for that, and they're two hundred dollars each. We did have them in there, but they were continually being snapped off, and we were also getting complaints from parents that they didn't want their kids filling up their bottles in the washrooms. They preferred them to be at the water fountains that were around the facility. So maybe, maybe another water fountain just outside of the washroom doors in the rubber lobby in the arena, maybe? Something like that would be a solution. So about twenty-two hundred each, twenty-four.
Could we, my guess, the question of council is, do we wanna put in enough, or at least two of them, augment? Particularly around the arena area, it seems like that's where the efficiency is? And would we wanna, how would we want, I mean, head?
If you say, oh, I want a water fountain here, and there's no pipes, it's not gonna be twenty-two hundred dollars. So there will be some spots, water fountains.
So the places that council was suggesting were actually there are, there's water.
We're not suggesting one where there are no pipes.
I wouldn't put one in the washrooms or in the change rooms, I wouldn't support that.
That's not what we're proposing.
I fully support putting one where the rubber needs some bathrooms. Yeah, because that area for kids is, it's incredibly crowded there with skates, it's really great to have that. I'm wondering about the, and then I can just hear Camilla saying that pucks are gonna, or sticks are gonna smash them off the wall. But it's also hard, when you're in the hockey change room, to fill up the water bottles in the hockey change rooms, there is nowhere in the change room area, but if there's, I'm wondering on the outside of the wall, there's no way that you can't get hockey gear, you can barely get hockey gear down the hockey hallway. So I'm just wondering if there's, if we can look at some, like, fund two of them, and then either have a council raise mentioned in the hallway for the pool, or find a place around the chinkers so that you can fill up hockey water bowls. You know, even on the outside of the bathrooms on the, you know, as you exit the door, like-
We can, we can follow that conversation with Camilla, but I think the, let's fund up to two of them. And is there monies within the facility's budget to do this, or should we add five thousand dollars?
I think if, it would be prudent to add the five thousand dollars, because she doesn't have that kind of a project.
because she doesn't have that kind of a project contingency on any of this.
We'd like to make, we fund up to $5,000 for two additional water fountains in Brenner Park.
From where?
Please can we finish the sentence? We can, we can either do it from revenue or wherever Anusha would want us to take a thumb. Or where we can take it. I mean, we have to, it's five thousand dollars. It's not going to dramatically change anything either way. I will say from taxation. I actually, these are the types of things, I almost think we should be planning for these types of whether water fountain in this facility or another, I mean, these are things that we should be ongoing, just. No, by Counselor Chappelle, second by Counselor Kent. All the questions others in favor?
That was it, Robin?
So Robin knows particular families would also have the ability to fill a bottle, would they?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I think we got a motion on all the items on the list on the screen. And Christine had one more item for us to discuss.
Yes, Commissioner Heinzman, thank you. Sorry, there just seems to be maybe a lack of clarification on what we're doing with this, with the groups and trails. We had originally put on the parking lot $7,000 to pay IMBA for contract to propose some funding models. And sadly, my recollection is we took that back off the parking lot with the discussion that staff would go, you know, municipality to municipality and ask what others are doing in that regard. We need to deal with it from a staff perspective. But there may be some confusion around that. So do we need to put 7,000 back in this budget or not?
In thinking back to that meeting, the whole purpose of having IMBA do the study was to take it off staff's desk because we have a lot to do. In speaking with Jeff Cook, he didn't see why that needed to be $7,000, that the scope of what was proposed could probably be pulled in and tightened. But that he was keen to see it move forward in a timely fashion and not be dragged out. So, so I think we should still leave some money in there just to get it done and be able to go into the next budget cycle with a broad review of what's out there and not have to have it be off the corner of your desks.
Thank you, Mayor Heinzman. The quote we currently have from IMBA, the proposal is for just under $7,000. And we haven't received anything less. Just for council's control in terms of Jeff may say can we add it in? And that's great.
I do have a meeting with Mr. Cook on next Monday, actually, pre-scheduled. And so we were just going to find out what their concerns were. And I also have already touched base through the GFOA forum, see what other communities are doing. As of Friday, I haven't heard back a lot on that. But admittedly, that's, often we have greater leverage and faster channels than other people to see what other communities are doing just because we kind of help each other out that way and try to be pretty available to each other. Versus if consultants are calling us, we may or may not take that call as quickly.
Okay. Do you want a motion or is it the same as?
Clarity, I think, because we took it out of the budget.
I'm just trying to think of pros and cons to leaving out the budget.
Well, the pros to taking out the budget is that we save $7,000.
It's not in the budget.
We took it out after one of the parking lot meeting days.
But I think there's pros to leaving, or putting it back in, maybe not to the 7,000. Certainly, you can speak with Jeff on where, if it's too high, then I think they're willing to negotiate. But one, I don't think it's just from the municipal perspective of the funding models, but also looking at mountain bike communities around the world and looking at how they're trying to fund their hubs long term. And for me, it's just the best use of staff's time. But if you think you can come back with funding options, options, not just what we currently have, but other ways to look at this, then we don't have to put it in there. But I just don't want another budget cycle to go by with circusing. It'd be great to look at other ways to fund this long term and anticipate growth. And ideally, have a long-term sustainable model in place rather than a year-to-year decision to make out of the grant made.
Certainly, Mayor Heinzman, what Counselor Elliott's describing, she's correct. I was not looking to do a worldwide search of what other municipalities are doing or what other funding options are around. So it would definitely be a less innovative approach if you go with, with our kind of inter-staff connections. We'll probably come up with models that we've seen before. But, so if that's what council's looking for, then yes, please. I appreciate Counselor Elliott saving. We certainly have a big workload going on. So if that's what you're looking for, absolutely, I would support that, Counselor Elliott. If you're more comfortable that we can find some compromise that is workable, I think that Mr. Cook and I could, but.
Any other thoughts?
I mean, I would like to see this progress. I think there is some value to this. And so, and I don't think it would get too far outside of British Columbia just because of different legislative issues that could pop up and make it not relevant to British Columbia. So, so I'm thinking of putting 5,000, or having the ability to put $5,000 into it. And if it turns out that it's more and they can't rein the seven down below five, then we can always top it up with council contingency if we want to, if we see fit to do that. But I would just put $5,000 in at this point. And then we do have something in the budget and it is a step forward and keeps it moving.
Has someone spent all the monies that, like, how do they, do they spend all the money that we allocate them every year? Or how do they, are they spending all the money we gave them every year?
I'm sorry, that would have to be a question for Mr. Cook. I haven't read their financial statements to that degree when they've sent in our community enhancement grants. They certainly rely on our funding for trail maintenance and funding their staffing for that, as far as I understand it. We did increase the trail maintenance this year up to, I believe, 85.
Well, someone will have to make a motion, so we won't move on, Counselor.
I moved that we put 5,000 in the budget to complete a funding model study.
A second, I think that's how to find. Any more discussing? I'll call the question, others in favor? Pose, if you care.
Do we fund it through revenue?
Yep.
Um, next.
Just a quick overview of special projects. And that's one of the outstanding items as well. There's been only three additions since January 30th to grant application. And the library provision, so that's like $10,000 that's funded by taxation. So one big item that's outstanding for special projects is the 2017 carry forward. At the moment, there we are. We have about, almost like $600,000 of carry forwards that are included in the special projects. And we're foreseeing about an addition of $200,000, a little over $200,000 of addition to carry forward. So that's like an item that still needs to be updated before we can go with the financial plan by law.
So that's just for information, Counselor, if you're not seeing. We think that the majority of the projects are at least reflected and we'll be adjusting the values that are coming from accumulated surplus. So they might look like they increase a little bit when you see the bylaw, but that'll be because we're carrying it forward with its funding source from the prior year. So I think it's more of a heads up. Now, I think our main concern on that is it's going to take us a little while to get them all updated. So we're trying desperately to make the 20th. We may not hit that goal because obviously we don't want to put forward a bylaw for you to pass that's not finished. So we're, we're working hard to try and make it into your 20th meeting, but it may be the meeting after if we can't get it all updated. Thank you.
Can we just go back to that?
Yep, go ahead.
So the important thing, if I understand this both incorrectly, is the taxation levels from 2017 to 2018 don't go down. They stay up. In fact, they increase by about $3,000 to keep that level of taxation for special projects. So that's the good part of this. And to me, I think, when I look at all the numbers, those are the two numbers that really have the impact.
Yes, and beware that your, your special projects, I don't believe we really increased them over last year at all. Although the special project number, the actual taxation use is pretty on par with last year. I think that's just slightly above.
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand. So the rest, the envelope itself is exponentially bigger than that because of other funding sources. So we're clear.
Isn't, isn't the total almost the exact same?
The, the funding envelope, like the actual funding envelope's about 400, I'm sorry. The taxation piece, just, yeah, just about 500,000.
Going from 46 to 515? Yeah.
Yeah.
Those are the numbers.
But the actual projects are 1.6 each-ish.
Are fairly, yeah, in line with.
But that number for 2018 will increase to about almost 1.9 million.
How much?
One point.
1.9?
We think there's still about $230,000 carried forwards to book.
On top of the 340?
On top of the 1.6. Clears my head. So but we, we, obviously that won't have a taxation impact because we have funding sources from the prior year. But just so you know, when you see the final project list, there could be more projects than we're reflecting to you today because they're carrying forward. So it's more an FYI for council, just so you're not surprised or think we haven't told you something.
All right.
So we've reviewed this already. Just quickly, service level updates. There was no change since the public meeting. And for future year, the information that we have is only like the BC Transit expansion and all the new 2018 FTs that are annualized. And we, I think we're kind of done. Do you have like any questions on what we've reviewed so far?
Any questions on any part of the budget?
Counselor Chappelle.
Can we speak to the economic development?
You can speak to any piece you want to.
Right, can we speak to? I brought up a few points about the economic development.
Maybe frame your question very specifically, just so they can.
So the staff, the contract services funding, the $25,000? No reference, reconciling not available. It's, if you, if you need more, on page four of the lead. Just all the contract services outside of the granting funding.
I'm sorry, Counselor Chappelle, is there a number on the one you're looking at?
I think if I was to frame my question appropriately, it would be, my concern is that we are adding contracted positions for work that is supposed to be funded. We receive grants to do work. And we're contracting positions as well to complete work. So I, I really would like it more defined. Maybe it's appropriate, maybe it's work outside of that, or maybe we're working on a grant. So we need to contract positions to fund other things, but I'm not sure.
I'm not sure this is a question for finance. So Linda, do you want to see Kate come and speak to us?
It's the 20th.
So, yeah, we have $50,000 in the budget. And then we have a contract position that's included in that for public consultation. Then we have the $150,000 grant. Plus we have the website redevelopment, that's supposed to be for website redevelopment. And I'm just, I'm getting confused with the amount of money and work that's being done and whether it's appropriate to re-resource and that we can actually get all those works done in this budget year.
The number four?
$25,000 contract.
The planning personnel, we have a full-time position on line 27, and then they, 2019.
And then the 2018.
Yeah.
So 27 is the planning personnel.
Yeah.
That's probably the one that goes on.
Yeah, that's a planning personnel, 27, yeah.
And was there another one? The other, the 25 grand from previous to Counselor Elliott's point was 2019.
So do we not have, we don't have any other positions funded except for the 50,000? Is that correct? I guess I'm clarifying.
What's the discussion when the, I'll let, come.
Linda.
Linda, go ahead. Mayor Heinzman, I've asked Kate to come in via text if you have specific questions. But essentially, the structure of the contract services, I don't have any, yeah, there are specific projects that that money is designed for. And the purpose of that is to avoid hiring other local staff without knowing what projects come up every year. Economic development is a different animal than all the other departments because we don't know what projects are being out, being funded year over year. So we have a contract envelope that we want to keep static year over year. And then we augment it depending on the project. The grants that Kate has, sorry, she's just talking right now. The projects that Kate has in terms of the granting, what she has put together. And, you know, this is a very operational thing at a staff level, so I didn't bring it to council. But what she's put together, as I mentioned, similar to, we're doing the OCP and rather than paying an external consultant to do the OCP, we use that money to backfill. She's putting together a temporary support position. And then her and Alicia can be the ones to work on that funding programs. And she's on her way, if you have specific questions for her. We can table it.
And I, and forgive me, I just haven't looked at the actual line items in the line of my, you say, look at.
Yeah, you know, trying to find the line names for the extra position.
We did have to augment for the major grant, grant plans, which Kate did talk to council about in various other meetings. And we have had to backfill the casual staffing to be able to meet the requirements of those grants. So like Smart City one, I believe, was the major one. But they are temporary.
Yeah, and, and all of these things, you're going to have a contract portion to it, whether it's the website, or the contract, or someone actually did the website. The legislative skills and labor pieces, going to piece contract it out to deliver the skills and labor piece of the change rate.
I understand that. I'm just making sure they're all within the grant funding that was allocated for that work. So the work is being funded by a grant, the grant is funding allocated for staffing to do the. Yes, extra contract positions.
So we're actually picking up. So right now, the budget's reflecting us actually picking up the 25 grand. So it would be good to get some clarification from Kate. But our understanding is that we would have to fund that person.
Mayor Heinzman, that's a project that council endorsed and we recommend in terms of us doing it internally. And then outside of that, there's also grants where there's been match funding. So every year, what we see happening is the economic development officer is going to come forward with proposed projects based on her strategy that will look at as a contract line in the budget and resourcing it as opposed to hiring more staff, is the idea.
To build the capacity.
Yeah, so perhaps Kate can speak. Kate, too. I'm going to, Kate. Maybe I'll ask Counselor Chappelle to articulate the question, so you can.
I think, thank you for coming. So I just want to, I recognize that you and Alicia are one, are basically a team together. And then we outsource for other things. I just wanted to understand if we were either properly resourced or are funded, like the amount that we're funded through grants for extra staff or the amount that we're funding through budget for extra staff?
Okay.
So the rural economic development grant and the $50,000? I know we have a contract position with the $50,000.
So the, so through you, the mayor, the rural grant doesn't, we didn't provision for any staff. That's purely, there's provisioning for contract services. So that means consultants?
Yes.
The project management for a portion of the rural dividend is managed by the district.
and the other portion is managed by the chamber. So there's a project, it's approximately $110,000 for the local data initiatives. That's managed by the district. And then the residual funding, it's about $90,000, is managed by the chamber. And that's so that, well, A, we felt like the expertise sat with the appropriate groups as well as just capacity. In terms of the $50,000 that was allocated for smart cities, we have gone out to an RFQ for public engagement, so we'll have support, contract support. As well as, we've decided to backfill in terms of some of the resourcing requirements because of the number of projects that economic development is currently engaged in. So that backfill will be about three days a week for a six-month period. So it's a temporary part-time position.
Within the grant outside the grant?
I'm sorry?
Is that within the grant?
So, just to clarify, the smart cities isn't a grant?
No, the smart cities, but that's the one contract RFQ that's going out. And then is the three days a week within that?
That's within our, that's within the economic development's funding from the district. So it's not grant funding per se. It's drawing from, it could be taxation, cumulative surplus.
So the 50,000 that we, that you came and said, we wanna augment our work plan a bit, or we, here's council's consideration, if we wanna augment our work plan to explore the smart cities initiatives, we need to augment it by X amount of dollars to be a public engagement and to backfill. That's what the money is for.
Exactly, that's what we're using.
It's not a grant. Now, if it results in some money in the grant down the road, that's another thing else.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah.
So the entire 50,000 is to, is to backfill those positions in the children's program?
No. It's to contract for public engagement services. And then we're backfilling so that we can draw on the expertise of the economic development specialist and officer to be able to project manage those.
Within that 50,000?
Within the 50 grant, yeah.
Thank you. And the other grant doesn't need any backfill? So there's no other extra, there's the 50 grand and the 150, and that's it?
There's the 50 grand, and then there's all of our other projects. One of those projects is the rural dividend. Exactly, yeah. So we're managing all the different projects with the two staff. As well, the backfill will help assist us to free up our time to be able to manage the smart cities challenge.
Excellent. I think that's a lot of work for two people. And if you take out the work for the 150, for the 50,000, with the website, the data project, that's, and that basically, I'm not sure where our community fits in, our community, like, where business support and everything else fits into that. But if you can do all that work, that's an amazing thing. I'm just wondering if there is extra financing needed in that department so that some of the capacity, like, I just can't imagine that we're taking care of community economic development on top of all of those projects with two people and some backfill.
Well, unfortunately, we got a grant to help us do that.
Well, we have the $50,000 to backfill the three days a week to do that work. And the other grant is to do the other work. That's, that basically uses up all our capacity.
I'm not sure that's what Kate said, though.
Do you have more capacity for more economic development with all of those projects?
If I may for you, Mayor. We, you know, the capacity that we have is the capacity that we have right now. In terms of the projects and how we implement those projects, of course, we could do more with more. Or we could perhaps be more efficient with more. The reality is, I think, all of the departments are, have lots on their plates. And we're also trying to be mindful of that in context of the work that we have and the staffing that we have. So, and also, it was brought to senior management in terms of what the proposed budget was and agreed upon. So we're trying to work within that, those parameters, I guess would be the response, yeah.
Go ahead, then. Mayor Heinzman, another thing is that as we have put together an economic development strategy, and all of the grants and projects that are coming forward are aligned with that strategy. So it's, it's how, it's actually implementing that strategy. These are sort of digressions from the original work.
Can I follow up with that? Because I, I do have concerns with the community.
You apparently disagree, so.
I do disagree, because I think that the work that was, you know, with all of that data acquisition and everything is amazing work. It's absolutely essential to get that done. And we've got, I think that is amazing work that is implementable with $150,000. But what my concern is, is we have an entire community that's suffering lack of economic development. And that we don't have the capacity without more, either positions or building capacity within staff, to actually get work done that the community needs, beyond data acquisition and website building and beyond smart cities challenge and familiar grant application. I do have concerns that our community is going to need business support and economic development with, you know, which is why we actually got an economic development officer. So I worry about our capacity and the amount that's been put in our budget for extra staff. And if there's more support needed, I just can't see getting all that work done with these staffing levels of need. That's all.
You said that, all right.
Yes. Yes. And we don't have anything in the budget here, so we, and well, beyond.
I think what staff has said is, they have a number of different projects on the go, that the funding is there to do it, what we presented, to do the work plan. Whether the work plan is big enough or diverse enough is another conversation altogether. And I think a lot of the work we're gonna do this year is gonna feed into where the work plan goes in the future. And councils, if you want to fund more money, put a number on the table. But at this point, you're on your own on this one, so either we move forward or. Anyway, I'm gonna move forward unless I hear a motion to augment this budget.
I'm asking staff if they feel adequately resourced to take care of community economic development as well as outside economic development. And if they're not, then I'd like to have a number or actually come back. I think this deserves a little bit of thinking about. And if there's an extra contract position to actually build a website, if we're doing that in-house or if it needs to be outsourced, if there's a little bit of budget money, like, you know, $20,000 extra to augment a program to make sure that our staff is properly resourced to get the work done in a timely fashion. The plan I read that, that was presented a year ago said nine months. And we're past that, so we're clearly not resourced, and we're into a different budget year. So I'm wondering if there's extra resources needed. And I'd like to have staff maybe come back with that before I think about improving budgets. So I'm just making sure that the community economic development portion is taken turns.
Is the community economic development portion of your work plan adequately resourced? I mean, nothing's adequately resourced, but can you get the work done?
We're managing incoming leads, we're servicing all incoming leads, that takes priority, the work we do. We're developing the website, which is supposed to drive efficiency, which has a number of tools and resources that will support our existing business community growth.
So you're working with planning on.
We're working, we're working in a number of different areas to support existing businesses. Of course, we could do, we could, you know, provide better levels of service and get things done faster if we had additional staff. But we're working within the provision of staff that we've been provided. So, you know, that's sort of where it stands in terms of managing projects and the ongoing well-being of our business community. You know, we're trying to be as innovative as possible, and that's by looking for opportunities, whether it's grant funding, contracting, using third-party resources as opposed to developing our own resources. So we're working hard to do that.
I think you guys have done a great job collaborating with these other, with the business community, with the chambers, with the BIAs, with the other organizations in the community to leverage that. Because we can't do everything and be everything to everybody. We have to date the collaborative partnership.
Thank you, thank you, Kate. I just wanted to make sure that that portion of our budget was absolutely resourced correctly. So if Kate feels comfortable, I'm happy with that.
All right, thank you. Any other comments of council budgets, Councilors?
Yeah, thank you. It's with respect to Protective Services. And we made the decision this year to include police officer and fireman portions of the year. But going forward in the five-year plan, and I see there's increases, have there been any decisions made about future additions? Or is it just kind of, these are numbers that are a little bit inflationary?
Right now, there is nothing else reflected. I believe we're waiting for the workforce planning to discuss, to come up with some better metrics for doing that. But certainly, council would like to reflect something in future years. I think that originally, we had talked about every second year or something. But I don't know that we have key statistics. I don't know, Mr. Stoner would like to speak to this further, but.
And I wasn't going to go down that road, actually. I know that's another discussion, but it was just, I guess, ideally, we'll get to the point where you're dealing with one position a year as opposed to two in one year. And I know there's decisions to be made to get to that point. I'll just say that.
Yeah, Mayor Heinzman, just for probably the public in reiterating that we're doing two this year, but half a year. So ultimately, they are staggered, we're not hiring anyone else next year. And then going forward, we are not taking it for granted that there's any decisions being made by council. The fire master plan, our CFP human resources, master plan's a big device, most will be considered as well as other resources. There's no commitment.
Yeah, and I think the only key thing is that we don't ever do the two days in one when we try to make two decisions. It's been when those decisions are set in the future. Okay, any other questions related to the budget? I don't see any. You have enough to bring forward a bylaw?
We believe we do. We'll finish off the carryforwards and bring you a bylaw. Thank you very much, it's been an excellent work, council, and we really appreciate it.
There's nothing left on the parking lot, we've done everything?
Believe it's been exhausted.
Excellent.
There's always next year, another strategic one.
Thank you. Moving on in the agenda to the correspondence from video financial auditors, Ms. Matthews.
Thank you very much, through Mayor Heinzman. My name is Christine Matthews, Chief Financial Officer. Just a very quick standard report from our auditors, so just outlining their audit plan for you. And specifically outlining respective responsibilities. So I know it's a long document, so basically, the respective responsibilities are outlined on page nine, appendix F, and appendix C, where they kind of talk about the various roles we all play in making an effective financial audit. And then of key interest to you, and the only reason I'm really gonna hone in and labor this, is the key audit areas on page three, 11, and more fulsomely described on pages 11 to 13. If there's anything in there that's not reflective of what council would like to also see reviewed, by all means, you can either let me know, or if you'd like to contact BDO directly as a council to see if there's any emerging issues you're concerned about. I've left contact information with Mayor Heinzman for that. And other than that, most of the things they've outlined are very standard for municipalities. I will give you a heads up, TCA, we are reviewing that. Ironically, they had indicated that the last fulsom review of that was in 2009. And we are probably bringing back some adjustments from 2009. So bear with us, we'll talk to you more about that as the financial statements roll out. But there were some assets reflected in there that should not have been. They belong to other parties or they were double counted. We'll get those assets sorted out this year. Unless there's any other questions.
This was the first time I've seen a letter like this. So it was sort of a new, and it sounds like this was a little bit of a legislative change, that they keep municipalities up to date on this stuff, or?
Well, they, apparently they did say they sent one in the past. It's never really come up on our.
Maybe it didn't on the council.
And it could be a conscious decision, you know, I'm more involved this year, I'm more involved with here on this year. It was sent, and it seems like it was directed for you, so obviously, you should see it. And, and obviously, I think the question is important. I think for the most part, this council understands what the terms of engagement are. But I think it is key to know what their key audit areas are. And if you do have any concerns, by all means, I'd wanna make that connection for you directly with BDO so that you can get anything that was resolved and reviewed at the same time that they're here at the audit.
So if anyone has any comments, they can give them to me before the video, if that's the best possible.
Sure, yeah, if there's, and they can come through me too, unless you're concerned if it's particularly, if you'd like it to be unknown to staff, then, then please go directly to BDO.
Yeah, so either Christine or I, clearly on the proposed audit approach, tables. Thank you. Maybe we'll just move your seat of the correspondence. Moved by Counselor Ray, seconded by Counselor Driver, Alvin and David, opposed by Ms. Paris. Moving on to the draft, community amendment constitution policy.
Respectfully, could we suggest that we get Mr. Rolston up here and do that item?
We'll do the, you wanted to do any danger flood hazard before?
And then I can stay at council's leisure to cover the other item.
Okay, we will.
He knows.
Move the agenda. Mr. Rolston here?
He will be momentarily. He knows, but I will make sure that he.
All right. The motion, it's on the back. Yeah, I know, gotta giddy up, man. Okay, we're just waiting for people. All right, Mr. Rolston, table is yours.
Good afternoon.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor Council. My name is David Rolston, I'm a municipal engineer for the Squamish. The intent of today's presentation is to seek council's endorsement for several different IFHMP, Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan implementation items that council specifically requested as part of the adoption of the plan. So the IFHMP was adopted in October of 2017. And council requested follow-up on three different items. The first was a funding strategy for how to pay for dike upgrades. The second was a flood management guide for developers and landowners. And the third was a strategy for Special Study Area Two, which is how the sea dike will tie in with the oceanfront peninsula. So, the Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan provided a prioritized dike upgrade program that was going to do, or does three things. The first is to correct all the existing dike deficiencies. The second is to build a sea dike for today and future sea level conditions. And then the third is to build the Squamish and Mancom River dikes to a higher standard of protection, given how much development is within those flood plains. The cost estimate for district-led projects is $85 million. So that excludes dike projects that are anticipated to be built through redevelopment. And it also excludes seismic upgrades, which is unknown at this point. So the approach was first to prepare a capital plan to determine schedule for upgrading the plan as well as annual funding requirements. Once we knew that, then it was to assess potential funding sources, and then finally, to prepare an overall strategy. So staff looked at the prioritized plan in the Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan and prepared this capital plan here that puts all these projects into years in order to determine the annual funding requirement. So the Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan sorted things into three different prioritizations. Projects that should be done immediately or at the earliest opportunity. Projects that should be completed before the next Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan, which is scheduled for about 10 years. And then the third are longer-term projects that could be completed after the next IFHMP update. So based on those priorities, staff prepared this capital plan to complete these projects within the specified timelines. And so projects that were recommended to be completed immediately or at the earliest opportunity are in this capital plan to be completed within the next five years. If it was going to be required prior to the next IFHMP, they're in this plan for, within the next seven years. And then if they are to be completed. And then if they are to be completed after the next IFHMP, they're shown in this plan to be completed within 25 years, the next 25 years. So the summary on this is that in order to complete this plan within a 25-year timeframe, we would need $3.5 million per year, which is considered beyond the means of Squamish, which has a relatively small tax base. And so external funding would be required to deliver on this schedule. So looking at potential funding sources, the first is senior government grants. This has been the main source of funding for our dike upgrades historically. Most of our dike system has been built and upgraded using provincial and federal funds. The challenge with that is that funding is unpredictable. We can get large chunks of money, but then there could be significant dry periods between grants. And so it's recommended not to rely on senior government grants, but to pursue those opportunities whenever they present themselves. Next is municipal funding. There's several different options within municipal funding. So the first is general revenue or taxation. This is a suitable funding source. But as I mentioned, with our relatively small tax base, funding is limited. It is recommended as a core component of the overall funding strategy. The next is to develop a flood protection utility. So the benefit of this is that it's a dedicated and stable funding source. It doesn't compete with other municipal priorities. So there is some certainty. The drawback is that there are high administrative requirements to administer that. And at the end of the day, taxpayers are equally affected, whether it's from a utility or from taxation. So it's not recommended because of the administrative requirements, and there's no clear benefit. Another option is to develop a local area service where a property tax could be levied on specific landowners within an area that would receive a service, like a dike upgrade. It requires the ascent of the majority of landowners in the area. So there is again, a high administrative burden. There's issues of fairness because whether you live in the floodplain or not, everyone uses services that are located within the floodplain, with most of our commercial activity taking place within the floodplain. And there's also challenges gaining ascent. So for all those reasons, it's not recommended to pursue local area services. The last bucket is developer-driven funding. So there's developer cost charges is one potential, but the province has ruled so far that those are not an eligible expense for DCCs. There's the potential to use community amenity contributions. So when properties rezon and increase the density within the floodplain, it increases community risk. And so CACs could be put towards diking improvements in order to offset that increased risk. So it is technically a potential funding source, but council has indicated that there are other priorities, such as portable housing. And so that has not been included as a component of this plan. And then last, there are direct developer mitigation requirements. So this is for projects that a physical mitigation is required to be built in order to designate a development as safe for the intended use. So this is a suitable funding source for significant portions of our sea deck where a property fronts the planned alignment of the sea deck. So to summarize, $3.5 million a year would be required to execute the flood protection upgrade scheme over a 25-year period. And it's recommended to fund that with municipal funding at a rate of $2 million per year. And to supplement that with senior government grants, whatever available, and also to require direct developer mitigation where it's applicable. So for development sites fronting the sea deck. If we fund at $2 million a year with municipal funds, that will allow the district to complete the capital plan within a 43-year timeframe. And that's considered reasonable because a lot of the projects that are further on in the capital plan are for building the sea dike to one meter of sea level rise or to upgrading the Squamish and Maumcom River dike beyond provincial standards. So these are somewhat more aspirational projects as opposed to firm requirements that have to be completed in the near term. One of the benefits of having a dedicated municipal funding source is it allows the district to leverage potential grant opportunities. A lot of the grants require matching municipal funds. So if we have a steady source of funding, we can jump on those opportunities whenever available. And then the last recommendation is that the district should apply all grant opportunities. And there are quite a few. There's the gas tax, there's the new building Canada Fund, there is also just recently, the Community Emergency Preparedness Fund. So there's a lot of different opportunities. The district has been successful with those in recent memory, and we have submitted some recent grant applications that we're waiting to hear back on. So that's a summary of the strategy. I suggest we have a discussion on each topic before I move on to the next one.
Karen, on the list of capital plans, number nine, can you read that?
Work with the Squamish Nation to remove and replace Gabian baskets on the CHM reserve. Sorry?
So...
On the back slope, that's correct, yes.
Thank you for filling in those words that were there.
Okay, yeah.
I've seen them, Shannon, one. And also, for the local area service, I know it's not recommended, but then in the report, you say areas like Waterfront Landing and Scott Crescent, where they're only protecting their own development, might areas where we would consider doing that. And have we missed the opportunity to do that with those buildings? Given that there's no current point load? Or is there still windows to do that?
No, it's... Sorry, Chair. My understanding is that waterfront is required to produce all of their own coastal protection, because they're elevating their bulk, filling the entire site.
It's the own evidence.
Service areas aren't contingent on rezoning. We can create a service area.
Anytime?
Anytime, for any area, depending on our needs. So we could do one. It's not contingent on resort. It would be a localized task for that area down in the future to pay for it. Am I getting that right?
The...
Yes, looking at the guest.
What you want to eat about?
She was looking at me, and I was looking at you.
Yeah, so the answer is, please not to do it.
Right, and the concept was to pay for operating and maintenance costs. And in discussion with the finance department, I understand that local area services are historically more commonly used for capital upgrades. Sort of one-time costs can not be set up as well to deal with ongoing operating costs.
Through the mayor, they can do both, but they're ideal where you have a one-time major capital expenditure, and then you can recover through the debt service from those areas affected. When you start to have to try and manage it on top of all the other taxation as an ongoing operating cost, they're that much more administratively intensive, and you really should justify it philosophically as well, local service areas, when you really think about who's impacted. If the downtown were to flood, it's probably more than just those property owners. It's probably the whole community. So how do you share that taxation load? So there's a lot of philosophical questions around local service areas as well.
Certainly, that's the case for the downtown, where we might have showed infrastructure, but Waterfront Landing and Scott Crescent, for example, are in and of themselves at the moment. Or one or two.
Yes, they might warrant or be a good case for why you might want to look at one in those cases. They're often used for standalones sewer systems.
Well, just on that topic, I remember when Waterfront Landing was before, as I asked that question and was advised that it was not a dike. They had to lift the whole site, and it was not considered a dike because it doesn't protect anything behind them. So it just had a whole different set of parameters around. It had to armor it and all that kind of stuff, but it was just not considered a sea dike. But the reason I had my hand up was the $85 million, which if I heard you correctly, you said did not include seismic and did not include developer contributions, which is contrary to what the report says, which it just says excludes seismic upgrades and assumes that developers will fund the sea dike through redevelopment where it fronts privately-owned parcels that will be redeveloped in the future.
Correct.
So it does include that?
So the $85 million does not include costs where it's anticipated that a developer would be able to build a portion of diking.
Such as along the Black Chow or something like that?
Exactly, yes.
Thank you.
But that's the aspirational number.
$85 million is considered a Class D cost estimate, so it has contingency built in. It's working with.
You said that some of the stuff in the latter years were to go above provincial standards. Is that included in the $85 million?
It is, yeah.
Any other questions for staff?
Um, in the little field guide that was produced, though, under the development permit, it says that flood hazard assessment is submitted with all development permit applications?
I'm actually just going to get into that. I was just going to cover this one topic at a time, so I have a...
Okay, who's the guide last?
Next, actually. And then last would be the special study area.
Any more capital plan questions? Okay, go on.
Okay, so with adoption of the Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan, there is a new flood management policy framework that is shown here. So the Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan is a background document, and it's recommended implementation of a new hazard policy within our official community plan. So that outlines our broad goals and objectives and also a land use policy. And within the forthcoming OCP, there are also new regulations for floodways. That's in development permit area two. And then lastly, we have a floodplain bylaw that regulates building elevations, setbacks, and construction specifications. So the intent of developing a flood management guide is to simplify this for landowners and developers because it is a, or it can be quite complicated to the uninitiated. So we've developed this short pamphlet. It's, I believe, it's six pages in total, including the cover page, that provides this high-level overview. And so it provides a policy overview, a brief description of our OCP, the new development permit area, and floodplain bylaw. And then it goes through the different types of land use applications, whether it be rezoning, subdivision, building permit, site alteration permit, or a development permit. It provides a brief description of the different policies that can apply. There's a link to all relevant resources. And then finally, there is a description of the Squamish web map, which we have now implemented all of our new flood layers into the GIS. I was hoping to show it, but I can't actually figure out how to get Internet Explorer to link onto here. Not sure if there's a trick to that. Anyone knows?
Should be able to just drag it.
How come the application?
Oh, there you go.
Sneaky.
Okay. So there is this new layer here called IFHMP layers. And there's all the usual disclaimers. And then you can select different layers. I'll turn them all on to start off with. And then you can go to your own property, and you can get all of this handy information. So this is going to be very jumbled to start off with. I'll have to turn some things off.
Just this better think... Oh, yeah.
It's thinking, yeah, there we go. So here's all of the layers on the side, and you can zoom in to any property within the floodplain. And I'll turn, I'll just leave the development permit area there on. Sorry?
Do you want to take down this to recognize?
So this is the new development permit area two. And it shows, these are secondary floodways areas that would be critical for passing floodwater.
Can you just on your, over there, just show what the hashes mean?
Sure. So within main river corridors, these are called primary floodways. These are areas where no buildings or fill can go. And then in dike-protected areas, there are secondary floodways where specific regulations apply. So you can zoom into whatever, wherever you live.
Can you go up to Rockendale?
So the secondary floodway is confined by the railway in Rockendale. So that's the development permit area. We also have a layer for flood and debris flow hazard areas. So you can see the Chickai Fan floodplain areas and different classifications of floodplain.
The Chickai Fan is from 1990?
There's been a slight update with new mapping that's been submitted as part of the Chickai River development. We've added this debris flow area C5. This is in the forthcoming OCP. So we've extended it a little bit further south. It used to just go up to this zone right here, which is C4. So that's been expanded. And then there's also some other minor debris flow areas along Mashur Creek and Ring Creek, and also some areas further south in town. So we have flood and debris flow hazard areas. We have a really handy tool for, I'll go before I get there, controlled densification areas. So this is the land use policy that's in the forthcoming official community plan. Red is the restricted densification areas where rezoning or OCP amendment would not be supported. Orange is the limited densification where conditions need to be met and a density cap is applied. And yellow is just where conditions need to be met in order to support rezoning. And then a very handy tool is the flood construction level. So now, anyone can go onto their lot and select spot and find out the flood construction level. So this is really useful for qualified professionals who are doing work or people who just want to get a basic understanding of what their flood mitigation requirements would be. And that varies all around the floodplain. So you go a little bit further south, and that would be a bit lower. We also have simplified velocity mapping. So this is a policy area within our floodplain bylaw. So if you select a lot, it will tell you the velocity is between 0.8 and 2.8 meters a second. That means that there's standard details in the bylaw that can be applied. So this is all the standard details. Some areas where the velocity is higher, they select that and you say it's greater than 2.8 meters a second. So they would actually need to get a qualified professional to provide them with a specific recommendation. And then there's also lots that are less than 0.8 meters a second. Where nothing is required, no erosion protection or anything like that. I can't find one right now, but take care of it for it. It's actually, it's only available, this is only available in the Squamish and Maumcom River floodplain where we did two-dimensional flood modeling. So in Valley Cliff and different areas, we have a, we assume that they are between 0.8 and 2.8 meters a second, and they just use their standard details. So that's now available to the public. We've had that on the internal website for a while, but I've been a public with the adoption of the bylaw.
And it'd be great to get this out to the number-one professionals that are in town to get their feedback on it. Like be purposeful of getting their feedback on it.
Yes, and it has been sent to them proactively. And now it's also being advertised with the new flood management guide that hopefully council produces.
Karen? Yeah, so two questions. Do folks who are out of the floodplain still have to do a flood hazard assessment? With a development permit?
No, only if they are in the floodplain.
So the first line under development permit requires that flood hazard assessment be submitted with all development permit applications.
Okay, that's, that should read for all development permit applications within the floodplain.
Okay. And then, do you want to just explain why we use the word simplified velocity map rather than a velocity?
Sure, so simplified velocity is, as it notes, simplified. So there's actual velocity mapping that shows the velocity at any given point in the floodplain. And the simplified velocity takes any given parcel and says what's the worst-case scenario on, what's the highest velocity on that parcel? And then it also applies a building code factor of one and a half. And so then it basically says, what, on any given lot, what is the velocity that should be... And so then it basically says, what, on any given lot, what is the velocity that should apply? And it's basically a policy area. As compared with, we have actual velocity mapping, which is based on the model results. So the simplified is really saying, what's the worst case that can happen? And we had to use that in the case of, say, a large lot where you might have one area of a lot where the velocity is half a meter a second, and another area of the lot where it's three meters a second. And we don't know where they're gonna put their building. So if a landowner wants to put their building where it was three meters a second, we wanna know what's, what's the worst thing that could happen on this lot, and have a qualified professional provide a specification for, for that.
Thank you. Thanks, and this may be too big a question for this, but I'm just wondering that the, when I look at the flood hazard management areas and the densification that we're predicting to be in these areas of flood hazard, how does this relate to the growth boundary densification outside of these hazard areas? As opposed to the anxiety areas?
This would be a great question for our planners who are working on the official community plan. I know that they've taken the Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan into account in forthcoming OCP.
Can you go back to that layer? It'll help because you weren't watching when it was up. So if you go back to the layer with the...
I'm watching, I have it right up here.
Excellent. Can you go back to the one where you showed the modified density?
That's what I'm looking at.
Okay.
Make sure everyone's looking at the same thing, we'll just go right there.
Okay. This is what you're looking for?
Is this a schedule in the OCP?
It is, yes.
And so our growth management is taking this, these layers into consideration in the growth management?
It, it should, it should be, yeah. I don't, I'm not as familiar, obviously, with, as, as the planners who are involved, but I know that they are very aware of the Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan and have taken it into account.
My take on this is when I look at the flood hazard versus densification up top versus in this area, and estuary management and just land building in these areas, it is quite... When you click on all the layers I've got on here, and imagine thirty-four thousand people in the area, and then having it built up, and some of the FCL levels are at seven point one-six. So I'm imagining that with height restrictions and everything else, it doesn't seem as integrated as perhaps it should be. Because if we're restricting height and having an FCL of seven point six, seven point one-six meters in some areas, I'm just making sure that all of these things come into, are, are taken into account when we're looking at densification in these areas, and we're planning thirty-four thousand people in this area, in, in the flood hazard area.
So the, the flood construction level is relative to the topography. And if you go north in Rockendale, for instance, the flood construction level is fifteen meters in, in some areas. And so it's just that the river is, is going up, and the land elevation is also moving up with it.
Then the Chikai comes down.
So that is to say it's comparison level?
Yes, yes. In downtown, that's five, like, five quid, some five meters was... But I also look like, as you go up in Rockendale, then you get the Chikai, then you get different flow hazards as opposed to river flow hazards.
But, but your question was, does the growth management boundary take into account the densification of, and... We could get Sarah or Matt in here to answer that specifically, but from all the conversations we've had about it, my understanding is yes, it has been. Whether or not you think that's any, you know, whether you think building above flood disruption or floodplain, that's a different, but it has been considered in the densities as per the growth management. And I think that was one of the things that tipped where we drew the line for the growth management plan. And you don't have to answer that, it's not here.
But I will say that this, these policy areas are incorporated into the OCP. And so for, for redevelopment or rezoning specifically to happen, it needs to meet the conditions that are in here. And so the idea of the Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan is looking at, there is going to be a lot of development in the floodplain that happens over the next generation. And so all of these regulations together are designed to allow the floodplain to continue functioning, and for development to happen safely and to mitigate these adverse effects. So it's, it's all been considered, and I think we have a very good plan to responsibly manage floodplain development.
Excellent, thank you. It's great work. The mapping is excellent.
Oh, I was just gonna ask, can, can you zoom out to sort of show all of Squamish? Will those layers still show up?
Sure. I guess I'll need to go any further.
No, okay.
It should.
I mean, I guess, yeah, my reflection on this is that, you know, from what I remember on the growth management boundary and the infill capacity, I mean, most of this area that we're talking, most of the residential area that is within the flood hazard management area is in Rockendale. And if I remember correctly, the actual OCP, when it contemplated growth in Rockendale, was very, very limited. And actually, the bulk of the growth was in the downtown and waterfront landing and other areas. So like, I think, I don't think the OCP under the thirty-four thousand, I think it's contemplated maybe net growth of like five hundred units or something in Rockendale, or one thousand, it's quite low, so...
So with more capacity than even thirty-four?
Right, and just to say that the, I think that, I guess, my guess would be that the planners had really not taken that into account when they were doing that calculation to get to thirty-four thousand. But because other than downtown, and then obviously the business department is not only a residential area, so...
And like, um...
'Cause, yeah.
Sorry, I didn't understand. Other than downtown?
Now, I guess my point was, is like, going from twenty thousand population to thirty-four thousand population using primarily infill development, most of that will not occur in the Integrated Flood Hazard Management areas, the high velocities.
Yes, exactly.
Well, it's not, not a good one.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, the, the thirty-four thousand was based on development with existing zoning. So assuming that no rezoning would have to happen. And, and you're right that a lot of that is going to happen within the oceanfront peninsula, waterfront landings, Scott Crescent. There's a, a small number of large developments that can accommodate quite a large population. So that's, that's where that thirty-four thousand came from.
Yeah. And, and yeah, likely the, the actual theoretical number is actually probably much higher than thirty-four than the density of the building. But even within the filters of this page, there's lots of capacity, theoretically. You ever have to... okay.
Okay.
Any more questions on the developer guide? I'll make a quick comment. I think it's an excellent tool, the combination with the website, the GIS, and the guide, and the flood construction levels. I think you're providing an amazing service to any landowner or, or land developing community. Most communities do not provide that type of comprehensive information, so.
No. Thank you. Okay.
So word-worthy, I think.
Maybe at our GIS, you will win another award for this one next year.
Exactly. Let's let David explain this one.
Okay, so this is the last item for this presentation. So this is Special Study Area Two, and the, the history on this is, the Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan looked at a seadeck alignment to protect the downtown and surrounding areas from coastal flooding. And Special Study Area Two was designated in the area at the north end of the oceanfront peninsula where it meets up with the downtown. The seadeck alignment cuts was designated to cut across from the north end of Catamaroo Slough over to the Mamcom Blind Channel. There's a lot of challenges that would be associated with that, so the dike alignment would need to cross private land. You're putting a whole bunch of fill over top of utilities that are underneath the road, and there would be difficult grade changes back to existing roads along Vancouver Street, Lager's Lane, and Galbraith. So a lot of design challenges. And we also recognize that the oceanfront peninsula, the flood mitigation concept is for them to raise their land and provide erosion protection around the perimeter. And then finally, there's been a lot of development interest in this area recently towards the north end of the peninsula. And so that has spurred the district on to, to coming up with plans and making sure that we have good plans in place in order to make sure that development happens in a way that, that fits with these longer-term plans. And so this is a close-up view of the area. Shown in yellow is the existing seadeck. And in red is where the Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan proposed the dike would cut across private land to Vancouver Street, and then east across to the Mamcom Blind Channel for shore, and follows north from there. This proposed concept that staff have been working on would modify that. So we're calling the work that we've done Special Study Area Two. And the proposed, the newly proposed seadeck would extend from the north end of Catamaroo Slough, following along the shoreline and tying in with the raised oceanfront peninsula at Westminster Street towards the, the south end of the picture. And then it would also continue north from Westminster Street, on the east side, following the shoreline all the way up to where the proposed dike was going to, to the red line. And then also as part of that, since the, the entire peninsula would be raised to about five meters, where the arrow is shown in orange there, the road would need to transition back down to existing grade. And we're saying that that should happen by the boat ramp in order to not make that boat ramp any steeper. And the boat ramp is kind of an interesting design consideration as well. We have looked at intentional seadeck breach points. So if there, when the seadeck is built, if there were a river dike breach upstream that we would intentionally breach the seadeck in order to allow water to relieve. And so the concept here with the boat ramp is that it's either left low and is considered an emergency closure point. So we put sandbags or tiger dams, or there's a, a product called FloodBrake that I can show you briefly that basically rises up. When the water rises, it comes up with it and seals off the, the dike, but it just stays flush with the ground the rest of the time. And so that's the proposed concept. The considerations are that adjacent properties, so along the, the north and east side of Catamaroo Slough, and also along the, just north of the shaded blue area, so on the east side of, of Galbraith, those properties need to be designed to accommodate this concept. So make sure that they're accessible after the road grade changes, and also to incorporate the, these proposed seadeck concepts. So if they rezone their properties, they would also be required to, to build the, the seadeck fronting their property. And then in the future, beyond one meter of sea level rise, the dike would eventually just fall all the way around the oceanfront peninsula. In the interim, as I mentioned, the, the district would need to have an emergency response plan to close holes, that, the hole in the seadeck, which right now is quite large, but, you know, in the near, relatively near future, is gonna be much smaller. And then also, as I mentioned, to incorporate a breach point in order to allow waters to get out, and the boat ramp is ideally located for that purpose. So the benefits of this are, first of all, that it facilitates development, particularly on fourteen hundred Vancouver Street, because they won't have a seadeck crossing through the property, which would likely sterilize that land. It saves the district money in that we won't have to expropriate land and build a seadeck across private property, and do all the grade changes on adjacent roads. And then it avoids a lot of those challenging design issues. So that's, that's the concept.
Sounds interesting. Do you have a further question, Councilor?
I was basically concerned about the, that type of effect from the river because the difference between the river flooding and the sea level rise. Sea level rise is over years, whereas flooding is instantaneous, or can be instantaneous of the, or debris flow hazards. And is one exit point an appropriate amount? Is that in the right place? That's, I'm not sure if the boat ramp addresses all those concerns for me.
So through the merit, we have looked at through the Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan, there was a, an appendix to the report that looked at this, and there was actually four different breach points that were identified. There were along Rose, Rose Park was one location. There's one at the south end of Westminster Street. There's one by the Third Avenue Pond, and one at Third Avenue at the outlet. So it's all been considered, and it's, it's considered an emergency response, or a future emergency response measure. Right now, the problem doesn't exist because the dike hasn't been built continuously throughout. But it is something that we need to consider in the long term.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions about the special study area? CNE?
This is, sorry, just one, this is the, the product that I mentioned. So this is called FloodBrake. And basically, it's a hollow metal gate that sits flush with the ground most of the time. And if the water rises, it, it starts to float. There's some gaskets along the side of it, and there are wing walls that form a watertight barrier. And, you know, this would allow boats to get in, drive over, or vehicles towing boats to go over top of it. And it stays low most of the time, but then you happen to get a very high water event, and it can provide a closure. So it's actually great in terms of allowing water to be relieved in an upstream river dike breach. You don't have to go and break any holes in the dike, it just is already low. And, but then it's there when you need it. So this is a possibility to incorporate into the dike system.
Are these exempted?
They are.
Are they in eighty-five million?
They're not.
Excellent.
There, there are much more cost-effective ways of doing it, but they're much more labor-intensive. And during an event, you have to get all the right personnel and materials in the right places at the time. So it's, it's a, it's a trade-off that we'll have to think about in the future.
Thank you.
Then, yeah, and the plan, or the report, rather, talks about until this is in place, the district should have an emergency closure plan. Is that in the works, or?
We're certainly well aware of it. It would be very challenging right now to do that because of the length of seadeck that's missing along Wayne Park and areas to the south. And often, there's not that much warning time to, in fact, to respond to. High tides are very predictable. Storm surge isn't always as predictable. So we're certainly well aware of it, and we get warnings from the province and when there's extreme weather conditions. So, you know, we're, we're prepared and we're aware of it, but it would still be a challenge to, to close up several hundred meters of, or basically temporarily construct several hundred meters of, of dike with, you know, with only a few hours' warning. And that's why we have within our five-year capital plan to be building these upgrades and really to reduce that, that length that would need to be temporarily closed.
Okay.
Yeah, the five-year plan is to put the berm in, right?
To construct the, a continuous seadeck to at least three point three meters, which is the minimum for today's sea levels.
And that was all from Victoria Street down to Vancouver Street?
Correct.
And then in the old plan, there was an area where you left a pile of gravel on both sides, so that if you did find water was coming, you could take the machine down and just walk it off.
There, I'm aware of plans to that effect for areas of our river dike. I hadn't been aware of that for our...
Well, in the nineteen ninety-four plan, that's what it proposed. Pretty much what you got now, only, and you can use non-permeable material, clay, that comes out of any excavation. So if Mario starts excavating down there, we could build that in a matter of a month.
The, the piles?
Called for a berm along the waterfront to three point three, which is about this high. So basically, you take dump trucks and back them up to where Victoria Street, and just start dumping all the way down to Vancouver Street.
So yes, yes, yes. Okay, thank you. Any more questions for staff? There's the recommended motion that we endorse the structural flood protection funding strategy, the flood management guide for developers, and the strategy for special study area two, as just a report, and to be able to hold up to it. The remover? The remover? Moved by Councilor Kent, seconded by Councilor Rice. Any more questions? Good work. Thank you. I'll call a question. All those in favor? Oppose? Motion closed.
Thank you.
So I guess we've got a one count. Motion to close. Yeah, we're gonna have to come back to that. Moved by Councilor Kent, seconded by Ted, Councilor Prior. All those in favor? Oppose? Motion closed.